For council members participating by electronic means, please ensure your video is turned on and let the clerk know if you're leaving the meeting for the purposes of confirming quorum. Council members are reminded that in accordance with section fourteen thirteen of the procedure bylaw, members must enable their video to confirm quorum. If council members attending by electronic means lose their connection during any portion of the hearing, we will recess the meeting until the connection is restored. If council members lose connection during the voting process, staff will get back, get you back online quickly while we suspend the voting process. The contact information has been circulated to you. Members of the public can view proceedings via the live stream and YouTube link, which will be tweeted out by at Van City Clerk. We'd like to acknowledge that we're on the unceded homelands of the Musqueam, Squamish, and Swahili Tuukw people. We thank them for having cared for this land and look forward to working with them in partnership as we continue to build this great city together. In case of an emergency where we need to evacuate the building, I would like to direct your attention to the exits. There are two exits beyond the glass doors and to the left. If these exits are obstructed, please direct your attention to the four exits in the chamber. Please use the stairs, do not use the elevator. I would like to highlight that there is a defibrillator located at the end of the hallway outside of the council chamber. I also want to take a moment to recognize the immense contributions of the city of Vancouver staff who work hard every day to help make our city an incredible place to live, work, and play. Clerk, may we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor Sim has a leave of absence for civic business one to five today. Councillor Carr. And councillor Kirby Young has a leave of absence from one to five today for civic business. Councillor Dominado. Councillor Bly.
Present.
Councillor Boyle.
Present.
Councillor Frye has a leave of absence for civic business one to five today. Councillor Montague. Councillor Claussen is in the chair. Councillor Meisner. And councillor Joe.
Present.
A public hearing has quorum, Deputy Mayor Claussen.
Thank you very much. Before we begin, I have some announcements. The public may participate by speaking in person, by phone, or by submitting written comments to mayor and council. Speakers will have five minutes to make their comments and should limit their comments to the merits of the report being considered. Speakers should also state whether they are in support or opposed to the recommendations and if they are resident of Vancouver. Speakers may only speak once or should follow along on Twitter at Van City Clerk for updates on the progress of the meeting so they don't miss their turn to speak. Any comments on agenda items can be submitted in writing through our online mayor and council feedback web form. This link will also be tweeted. Those speaking on behalf of four or more persons or groups, including the speaker, will have eight minutes to speak and only if those represented are also on the line or in person and must not be individual speakers themselves. All right, and I see speakers who are pre-registered with presentations are reminded that the public live feed has a slight delay. To navigate through the slides of your presentation, please say next so that the clerk may advance your slides. Okay. Council is committed to ensuring that all people who participate in council meetings or public hearings are treated fairly and respectfully. The language we all use in these meetings should reflect respect for all residents. No form of discrimination is acceptable or tolerated. Discriminatory language includes attacks on groups of people and individuals. Vancouver's procedure bylaw prohibits council members from the use of words, tones, speakers, or gestures that expresses a negative view of the character of any person or groups of people. Members of the public are expected to not engage in improper conduct, which includes the use of expressions that promote hatred or are defamatory as outlined under section seven point eight of the procedure bylaw. The creation of a safe and inclusive environment for the public staff and council to participate is all of our responsibility. Members of council may call a point of order if language used by another councillor during a meeting is not respectful. As chair, I will ask the speaker to modify their language to ensure that they are using respectful language. I also want to note the city of Vancouver's longstanding commitment to equity, diversity, and inclusion, including the utmost respect for all genders. I remind council that when addressing speakers and staff, we will avoid using gendered honorifics and will instead refer to the person by first and last name, role, or title. A reminder that council's role at a public hearing is to be a quasi judicial body, which means council is to only consider the merits of the rezoning application or heritage designation. Council members may ask clarifying questions of speakers, including the applicant, or technical advice from staff, but should save debate for after the close of the speaker's list. After hearing from speakers, council may, one, approve the application in principle, two, refuse the application, or, three, refer the application to staff for further consideration. Finally, if council does not conclude the public hearing this afternoon, council will recess at 5:00 PM for a dinner break and reconvene at 6:00 PM. If council does not complete all of the public hearing agenda items, we will recess and reconvene the meeting on Tuesday, June twentieth at 6:00 PM. So our first item of business is the rezoning at two three two five, two three seven seven, West Forty-Ninth Avenue. Does any member of council wish to declare a conflict of interest in item one? All right, the clerk will now read the application and the summary of correspondence received.
This is an application by Intracorp Homes to rezone two three two five to two three seven seven, West Forty-Ninth Avenue from residential district to residential rental district to permit the development of a five-story market rental building. A height of fifty-five feet and a floor space ratio of two point four are proposed. The general manager of planning, urban design, and sustainability recommends approval subject to the conditions set out in summary and recommendation. The following correspondence has been received since referral to the public hearing. Two hundred and thirty pieces of correspondence in support, forty-five pieces of correspondence in opposition, and three pieces of correspondence regarding other aspects related to the application. This represents all correspondence received up to twelve PM today.
Wondering if it'd be possible, there's a little bit of seating available on the ground floor, maybe you could come down, ma'am? Okay, thank you. All right, this is the first call for speakers. Any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free one eight three 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 five three eight six one zero, followed by participant code one zero six one four four five pound before the close of the speaker's list. The phone number will be tweeted out and made available on the live stream. Just to your, just to your left, ma'am. There you go. There will be an opportunity for new speakers and missed speakers to be added to the end of the registered speakers list. So right now we have staff from planning, urban design, and sustainability here to present the application. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, Deputy Mayor and council and members of the public. My name is Lex Deminiak. I'm the rezoning planner for this application, which is being considered under the secured rental policy. The secured rental policy, or SRP, encourages purpose-built rental housing in Vancouver and aligns with the rental housing goals of the Housing Vancouver Strategy and the Complete Neighborhood Goals of the Vancouver Plan. Updates to the SRP were approved by council in two thousand twenty-one to create residential rental zones, also known as RR zones or district schedules. Additionally, council approved a map which stipulates eligible areas for standardized RR zones. Rezonings to standard rental districts have a simplified rezoning process. Instead of creating customized site-specific CD1 zones, the RR district schedules establish clarity on permitted use, height, and density. The RR zones provide more certainty about what building forms may be permitted in low-density areas. The schedules are accompanied by comprehensive design guidelines, which were also approved by council. In the simplified process, architectural drawings are not required at rezoning. The specified building design would be reviewed through a future development permit process, at which time the neighborhood would again be notified to provide their input. This map from the secured rental policy shows sites that are zoned RS or RT, which are outside of recent community plan areas and are thus eligible for RR rezonings. The locations are based on close proximity to public transit and local shopping, as well as being on the first full block on either side of an eligible arterial road. The purple star indicates the site of this application, located on Forty-Ninth Avenue between Vine Street and Balsam Place. Shown in blue are the blocks around the site that are also eligible for rezoning to an RR district. The eligible RR zone options for this site are shown on this slide. For the subject rezoning application, an RR two B zone is proposed, which requires one hundred percent secured market rental units. Outlined in red, the site of this application is zoned RS five and comprised of four detached homes. At present, there are two tenants eligible for renter protection. The site is surrounded by similar RS five zoned residential properties. Consistent with the intent of the SRP, the site, again shown in red, is located near several parks and schools, as well as shopping areas and frequent transit routes along Forty-Ninth Avenue and West Boulevard. The site is also in close proximity to the Arbutus Greenway. The proposed RR two B district schedule allows for a five-story, one hundred percent residential rental building with a maximum FSR of two point four. The Housing Vancouver Strategy seeks to deliver a range of housing tenures, a range of tenures and affordabilities across the housing continuum. Renting, shown in green on this table, has lower monthly costs than home ownership, which is shown in orange. The process for seeking public input on residential rental rezonings is the same as for CD1's rezonings. For this application, an open house was held last May and June, and three hundred and thirty-two pieces of correspondence were received. Support was given for the proposed increase in rental housing stock for the area. Concerns were expressed related to the fit of the proposed development within the existing low-density neighborhood, the potential foreshadowing and view impacts, and worries related to traffic safety, congestion, and parking availability. Additionally, some residents felt that the area's existing infrastructure and amenities lacked the capacity for new residents. It was also suggested that more public engagement should have occurred in the development of the SRP and the designation of Forty-Ninth Avenue as an arterial road. In response to concerns, staff note that the proposed RR two B zone permits up to five stories and is consistent with the SRP. To further illustrate the policy direction for the surrounding area, this slide zooms in on SRP eligibility in the immediate neighborhood. With arterial roads shown in orange and blocks eligible for rezoning under the SRP shown in light and dark blue, shopping areas are displayed in red. During the development of the RR district schedules, staff analyzed the suitability of various apartment forms, including shadow impacts on adjacent properties. The analysis is reflected in the regulations contained in the RR district schedules and design guidelines. The proposal will be required to comply with the parking bylaw, and rezoning conditions have been written to deliver improvements to address road safety. With respect to neighborhood capacity, engineering staff have reviewed the rezoning application to ensure adequate stormwater management and sewer capacity is maintained throughout the system, and the applicant would be required to submit a final rainwater management plan at the development permit stage. Local schools are projected to be at and below capacity in the future, with the VSB working with the city to manage the citywide capacity of their system, which currently has a surplus of spaces. Council approved amendments to the SRP to allow simplified rezonings in low-density areas after extensive public engagement. For this rezoning application, typical city engagement processes were followed. Specific site and building designs would also be reviewed during a future development permit process with another round of neighborhood consultation. With respect to concerns related to the classification of Forty-Ninth Avenue as an arterial roadway, this designation predates the amended SRP and has been established through a variety of transportation-related criteria. For example, on arterial roadways, people movement is the primary consideration, while driveway access for motor vehicles is typically limited or not permitted. Arterials also serve as major bus routes and are part of the TransLink frequent transit network. The public benefits accruing from this application include the secured market rental housing units. There is also a DCL contribution of just over three million. The applicant has chosen not to take the DCL waiver. The CAC process for rezoning, or policy for rezonings, exempts routine lower-density secure market rental rezoning applications such as this one. In conclusion, the proposal meets the intent of city policy by delivering a secured rental building. Staff support this application to rezone to the RR two B district schedule with the form of development reviewed through the development permit process. Staff and the applicant team are available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions from council? See anybody in the queue? Very good. Are you, oh, there you are. Okay, here we go. Councillor Carr. Thank you. We can, I'll tell you what, why don't we hold off and we'll just go to, we'll clear the queue and we'll go to hear from the applicant team first? Thanks very much. Please introduce yourself.
Good afternoon, acting mayor and council. My name is Farouk Beboule and I'm vice president of development at Intracorp Homes. I'm here today to share my thoughts about the secured rental policy, provide my feedback based on the correspondence received to date, and also express my support for the proposal. As both the applicant and a neighbor of Carersdale, I have a personal connection to this neighborhood. I've always admired Carersdale from afar, often glimpsing at its charm while riding the Forty-Ninth Bus to UBC. Now that I've lived here for the past four years, I feel incredibly fortunate to be a part of this community, and I'm excited to see how my neighborhood evolves to meet the city's growing housing needs. Firstly, I wanted to commend council on approving the forward-thinking policy eighteen months ago that allows for the introduction of moderate density on key arterials. Arterials need density, and this arterial in particular is well-serviced by transit, has access to amenities such as parks, schools, community centers, and is in walking distance to two local shopping streets. I firmly believe that policies like SRP are necessary to create complete communities, complete walkable and connected communities. Secondly, in my opinion, the four-year public engagement process leading to council's decision was extremely thorough and there were numerous opportunities for all voices to be heard. Overall, staff connected with eleven thousand people over the, eleven thousand people. In the last year of engagement alone, staff reported six in-person information sessions, ten stakeholder workshops, four hundred responses to an online comment forum, which received sixty thousand impressions, seventeen hundred responses to an online survey, five thousand visitors to a Shape Your City webpage, two public information sessions attended by a hundred and two residents, and various public and development industry one-on-one sessions. It's hard to accept the criticism of my neighbors that they didn't know about SRP, nor had they had a chance to voice their concerns about the engagement. It's my sense that this proposal is the first of many along Forty-Ninth. It's receiving a disproportionate share of negative responses. Despite the fact that two-thirds of those engaged in SRP supported the policy, my neighbors are unwilling to accept progress within their community. This exclusive mindset and lack of housing diversity has resulted in a neighborhood which is largely single-family homes, has a growing sector of senior and empty nesters, and a large population loss over a census period. In fact, we lost eight hundred and forty-five youths and two thousand fifteen adults aged thirty-five to fifty-four. Without policies such as SRP to provide new housing options, this trend will continue. The SRP policy was approved by council, and this arterial was identified to accommodate growth, and proposals are rolling out as intended. So we're here to deliberate the merits of a zoning district change to four single-family homes to allow for a five-story building with one level of underground parking. Our proposal is a hundred percent compliant to the SRP policy. No relaxations are being sought. It is important to acknowledge that rental housing has always been a part of my community. The majority of Carersdale's rental housing, around twenty-five hundred of three thousand units, were built before nineteen seventy-nine, some of which are just three blocks away from this site. However, in the last thirteen years, we've only seen a net addition of two hundred and eighty-two purpose-built rental homes. That's an average of twenty-three new units per year. Carersdale, like every community in Vancouver, needs to take on its fair share to meet our population growth. I urge council to support this rezoning application and reinforce the core principles of the secure rental policy: housing diversity, housing affordability, and neighborhood inclusivity. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, now, are there any questions from council to staff or the applicant team? So councillor Carr.
For the applicant team? And it has to do with one of the, one of the conditions in appendix be with conditions of approval around green roofs. And it says that you don't have to do a green roof, but that if you do do a green roof, there's some terms. Are you considering doing a green roof?
We are, we're considering putting the amenities base on the rooftop and greening as much roof space as possible, but that will all be worked out at a future development permit application.
I understand. I'm just looking to see your direction on that in terms of your consideration of it. Okay, so amenities base with green in it.
Urban agriculture, green roofs.
Green agriculture, okay, okay, that's good. Thank you. I have questions to staff. Staff, one of the questions is no consultation with homeowners. I've read all of the comments that have come in to us. One said that there was no consultation with homeowners in this vicinity. Can you just outline for us briefly? I saw that you did get, you did do some reporting on this, but just to verify, were homeowners contacted in which ways?
Thanks for the question, councillor. I just asked for a clarification. Are you seeking information related to engagement related to this specific proposal or related to the?
Yes, this is, I'm quoting from an input from a resident, no consultation in the vicinity of this proposed development on West Forty-Ninth and Vine.
Thanks for the question. Our standard rezoning process, public notification and engagement process was followed for this application, which is the same for any CD1 application. So it would be postcards in the mail for the two-block vicinity of the site, as well as there were two site signs on the site and a virtual open house period.
Okay, and a virtual open house, which, there was some information we provided earlier in your, in your presentation about how much response we got to that, which was quite considerable. Okay, that's great. Second question. Many of the people who've written in to us have said that it will significantly increase in traffic and lead to unsafety on West Forty-Ninth Avenue. What's the traffic analysis for this project?
I'm going to pass that to Rosemary, who I believe is on the line from engineering.
Thank you for the question, councillor Carr. Jessica, senior transportation engineer. Sorry, can you hear me?
Now. Now I can.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Apologies. Yeah, so engineering has reviewed the site. We do review the sites, each site with respect to traffic operations and safety impacts. The development is really well cited with respect to the frequent transit network and cycling infrastructure and with the scale of development that's expected for the site. The volume of traffic that might be expected here isn't anticipated to have huge meaningful impacts on the roadway network with respect to operations and safety. The site's also responsible for several upgrades adjacent to their site.
Okay, that's, that's good. Maybe we can get some more details on that later. That's, that's fine at this point. There were different letters that came in from both one pro, one con, which talked about the cost. One, one of the letters again said it's too expensive, thirty-one hundred for a two-bedroom suite. One letter in support said that the homeowner, that home, a home in Carersdale required a six hundred and sixty thousand dollar down payment, this is for the average home price, with a mortgage of fourteen thousand dollars a month. Is there any verification of those kinds of numbers? Are they in the ballpark of accurate? I'm both pro and con. Well, I know the con is because thirty-one hundred is in the report for a two-bedroom, but the, the, the letter that was against the development, I mean for the development and the cost of home ownership in the area.
Thanks for the question, councillor. Graham Anderson, housing policy in planning, urban design, and sustainability. I can't speak specifically to the numbers in the commentary that was received, but I would offer a general comment that market rents, although high and certainly not affordable to all, are a much more affordable option than home ownership is. We would expect that to be true in the vicinity of this proposal. And I would invite, we do have other housing staff on the line that may be able to speak more specifically to the specifics of the numbers that were referenced in the comments. So Annie or Ty, if you're on the line and you want to add to that, please do.
We're just waiting to hear. I'll have other questions, but there for staff I can ask at the end of the, after the speakers.
Thank you, councillor Carr. Okay, I don't see any other questions in the queue here, so we will now hear from the public. So I'm referring now to our speakers list and our speaker number one. On the phone line is Kristy Mattis. Kristy Mattis, are you there?
Not on the, excuse me, not on the line.
All right, very good. We'll go to speaker number two then. Greg Noble. Greg Noble, are you there?
We just need a moment to get connected.
Very good, thanks.
And I hear that speaker number two is not on the line.
Thank you. All right, we'll try speaker number three on the line. Maria Hubanet.
Yes.
Maria.
Yes.
Can you just, can you tell me you live in the city of Vancouver?
Yes, I do.
Very good, thank you. Please go ahead, you've got five minutes.
Thank you. Yeah, like I said, my name is Maria Hubanet. I'm here representing myself. I'm a resident of Vancouver. I live within a couple of blocks of the proposed development with my children and family. And I am speaking in opposition of the report recommendations regarding rezoning on Forty-Ninth Avenue. I'll just start by saying that I'm not opposed to densification. However, it needs to be thoughtful, safe, and suited for the specific context, and I'm opposed to this particular application for the following reasons. First, this process. There was no direct notification to the homeowners in the area who will be impacted by their home placed on the secured rental policy map. I am notified directly when my hydro or water is being temporarily shut off, when there will be filming on the street and for electric conveniences. Not being directly notified of a major policy change that will have massive and permanent impact is not fair, inclusive, or consultative. Two, Forty-Ninth Avenue is too narrow a street for such a tall building. Designated the affected portion of West Forty-Ninth Avenue from West Boulevard to Larch as an arterial under the SRP eligibility was a mistake and should be reconsidered. The street is relatively narrow at fifty-four feet from property line to property line, including sidewalks and boulevards on both sides. As a comparison, Grandville Street is seventy-four feet, West Forty-first is seventy-three feet. A five-story building on a fifty-four-foot street is not a reasonable proportion. Three, the section of Forty-Ninth between West Boulevard to McDonald Street, about nine hundred meters, is unique in that not one single intersection is aligned. All are key intersections or offset intersections, making it difficult and potentially dangerous both to cross and to turn onto Forty-Ninth as a pedestrian, cyclist, or motorist. There have been countless collisions along this strip and numerous deaths of pedestrians attempting to cross at Forty-Ninth and Vine, exactly where this building and its driveway would be located. Vancouver's Transportation Plan 2040 states that policy and design changes Vancouver's Transportation Plan 2040 states that policy and design changes must not make conditions worse for the most vulnerable road users, such as people traveling by foot, bicycle, and motorcycle. This zoning change will do exactly that. To add, there are many children and school groups crossing here to use nearby Maple Grove Park and Pool. Four, there are numerous additional proposed developments in similar, similar in scope and scale in the immediate area, including around the corner on Marine Craftson and further east on 49th Avenue. This will add further pressure on insufficient infrastructure. Five, the corner lots fronting onto 49th Avenue flank the properties behind them perpendicularly. For this application, the four parcel lots abut one single property along their entire side property line. The shadowing and overlook of a five-story building to the immediate south of this one property has not been adequately considered. Carisdale is a good example of an ex-muse neighborhood made up of single-family homes, rental housing, co-op, and strata buildings. There are many opportunities for safe and appropriate densification. This particular strip of West 49th is inappropriate for a building of this size for several reasons. It is too large for the width of the street. It would be located at an unsafe street location. And it unfairly affects one particular homeowner due to the layout of the flanking street. I hope that this council will halt this application and reconsider the appropriateness of this portion of West 49th as part of the SRP eligibility map and help Carisdale densify in a way that is thoughtful, appropriate, and safe. I would encourage each council member to walk this strip and even attempt to cross the street at a busy time to see how unsafe and inappropriate this site is, particularly for a development of this size and scale. Thank you.
Thank you, speaker. Okay, we're going to go to the next speaker on the list, Frances Ho. Is Frances Ho on the line?
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you. Go ahead, speaker. Can you just confirm whether you live in the city of Vancouver?
Yes, I'm a resident of Vancouver. I live just a few, few houses down from the development, proposed development site. I heard the comments earlier, including the last speaker, Maria. I totally agree with what she said. I'm opposing to it. Basically, for three basic reasons. There was no meaningful consultation of the neighborhood before designating the stretch of this West 49th as an arterial corridor, because the normal notification by the city is not adequate during the COVID circumstances. We were not able to visit libraries or community centers to CD. So a lot of us were shocked by this last-minute notice. It should, we should have been notified directly, just like this time. Secondly, as Maria has indicated, it's unsafe. This stretch of West 49th is only a one-lane either-way road. The streets running north and south on West 49th are offset. They're not straight going up and down. So you can hardly see traffic coming on both sides, poor visibility, and crashes. These offset streets are not reflected in the SRP eligibility map approved by council. Also, this stretch of West 49th, if not the narrowest, is one of, likely one of the most narrow arterial corridors in the SRP. Most of the time, you cannot, again, see traffic because of the offset. There were three pedestrians that were killed recently, 221 crashes, and 92 casualties since 2016. That just summarizes that we're not happy with all these. So that, that's all my, about my comments. The next speaker, number five, Mabel Ho. She's my wife and she's not feeling well. And she's sharing the same feeling as I do. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ho. Noted that Mabel Ho is not going to be on the line next. All right.
Yes, she's not feeling well, but she's opposing to it. She asked me to present it and apologize to mayor and council that she cannot come to the phone today.
All right, thank you. Hope she gets feeling better soon. Thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Onto our next speaker, who is representing a delegation or four above. So I think there's a couple of steps here. Elizabeth Ahn is here and she's in person. And I believe she's with.
They're outside here.
Okay, great. We, we have to confirm them?
I don't know where.
So we just need to get them escorted into the chamber here? We can wave them in?
I saw two of them, but I came with the third. I don't know where to put them.
Okay, we just need to have three more of you, Ms. Ahn. Are you upstairs there?
Oh, they're upstairs.
Oh, they're upstairs.
In hiding. They're in hiding.
Very good, okay. I can count. Are you all together? I've got two. Very good. Okay, we've got enough. So Ms. Ahn, please, you have the floor for eight minutes.
Okay, thank you. I am Liz Ahn, a resident of Vancouver for over 50 years. I'm here today representing myself and four others, Diane King, Reminder Dussage, Jane Lipinski, and Warren Clark. We are all concerned with the development direction the city is taking. We oppose this rezoning and other similar requests. Vancouver already has the highest density of any city in Canada, 5,700 people per square kilometer. Vancouver is the least affordable city in Canada. Vancouver has the highest home prices and the highest average rental costs in Canada. Well done. This application does nothing to curb these high prices. In fact, it exacerbates the problem. I understand all units in this application are market-priced rentals. If so, this application does nothing to address the real problem, lack of affordable housing. Average rental for a one-bedroom in Vancouver is now $34,000 a year. A 9.7 increase from May 2022 to May 2023. A two-bedroom is $44,000 a year. This application is housing for the elite. Teachers, nurses, paramedics, firefighters, students, young families, seniors, and many, many others are squeezed out. They cannot live in Vancouver. Turning Vancouver into an elite enclave is not good for our society. The west side of Vancouver has four very large development projects on the horizon. One in particular has huge impacts on this neighborhood. It doesn't appear to be part of the overall consideration. These projects will add a huge increase in housing. Their positioning is very high-impact. When you add huge density at the end of a peninsula, it has significantly more detrimental impact than if the same development was central. Again, this doesn't appear to have been considered. If you continue to approve applications like this, you are signing the death warrant for all two- and three-story rental buildings built in the 70s, built with taxpayer funding. Their land becomes too valuable to keep the existing structures. We lose the affordable housing we have now. This application throws the neighbors living on the west side of Vine under the bus. The shadow this building will cast will make one and maybe two properties there, the Black Hole of Canada, of Calcutta. Victimizing citizens is not good for our society. This application is also not good for the environment. Right now, these lots are well-treated and have very low site coverage. They have lots of permeable land to absorb rainfall. Most trees, trees, if not all, will be clear-cut with this application. Site coverage will be at least 75% based on the setbacks required, if they are adhered to. There will be very little permeable land left after sidewalks, garbage storage, and underground parking ramps are added. So almost all the rainwater hitting this site, millions of gallons over the winter, is going into the sewers at the worst possible time. Even if you were to mandate a green roof, there would still be a very significant quantity of rainwater over the winter flooding the sewer system. Cisterns that capture the heaviest flow are the only possible solution. Without them, sewage will be heading downhill, down Balsam and 49th, heading for their homes, heading for the homes along the way, and to the homes on the south side of Southwest Marine Drive. This sewage will enter those homes on their top floors, filtering down through their entire homes, more victimization of neighbors. All this rainwater is going to Iona Island to be treated, and the developer pays $0 for this. We all know it isn't really free. Vancouver citizens will be paying to treat it forever. This is the big rip-off. Citizens who try to do the right thing to cool the planet, okay, and practice carbon capture are doubly ripped off. We are charged to treat our garden water as sewage, water that goes into the ground and nowhere near Iona Island. Sewage meter should be required for all developments with over 30% impermeable land. Two years ago, you forced a water meter on me because I have a third of an acre. So far, you've ripped me off for over $1,700 in sewer charges for water going into my ground. I am requesting you provide me a sewage meter at no cost to me to stop your rip-off. Sewer capacity is another major issue. You're paving over the city at an accelerated rate. Capacity becomes a major issue. Developers do pay hookup charges, but unless there is a site coverage component included in the fee, then again, it is the big taxpayer rip-off. When sewer upgrades are needed, it falls on the taxpayer again. Adding thousands of residents places a burden on our treated water supply. I understand that 50% of all our water demand is to flush toilets, which is a complete waste of valuable water. In all new construction, a gray water system should be required. Let's keep the treated water for individuals to drink and to save the planet. This application and others like it are not good for society, not good for the environment, and financially benefit only the developer at the expense of Vancouver citizens. It makes the real problem, affordable housing, harder to achieve. Until you get a handle on the full picture, we urge you to reject this and other such applications. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, very good. Thank you for that. We are going to move on to our next speaker, who is Sean Lewis. We have five minutes, Sean.
It's automatically, technology. Thank you for taking the time and for listening today, acting mayor, council, staff. My name's Sean Lewis. I'm a 20-year resident of Carisdale, where I live with my wife, our three kids, and our two pets. I've been working with a few hundred neighboring residents over the last few years in response to this development. And really, thank you for listening. This is a public here, and I've taken time off of work today because this is important. And this isn't a box-ticking exercise or window dressing. It's really an opportunity for council to listen open-mindedly to the thoughts and concerns of residents so you can make the decision with the best information possible. So I ask that you please take advantage of that opportunity. I think the voices of residents who are most impacted by a development should be paid special attention. So from the outside, I want to say I acknowledge the housing challenges and crisis that Vancouver has. And I support increased densification in and around the city because I want to see a city that is desirable and sustainable and livable for generations to come. But in that same breath, density doesn't mean density at all costs, and it doesn't mean density everywhere. So we have a few major concerns about this development. I want to focus on two in particular, the flawed SRP process and the unique characteristics of this stretch of West 49th. Now, as for the SRP consultation process, there was a flaw. There was no meaningful consultation with our neighborhood about the new SRP, as well as the impact of being designated as an arterial corridor. The city's notification about the new SRP consisted of advertisements in public libraries and community centers, an ad in one online newspaper, and an ad on its website. And when did this happen? Between March of 2020 and August of 2021, during the heart of COVID, when everyone was locked down and no one was going to community centers and no one was going to public libraries. We were focused on our health and wellbeing. Residents should have been notified directly, the same way they are being notified about this proposed development. There was no direct outreach. If the city is serious about soliciting the impact of residents, you need to reach out to residents directly, the same way you're doing now with respect to this proposed development, where there was a direct mail-out and the city received 227 submissions in response, of which 14 were in favor, 6%. That is a strong sign. There is something wrong here. So the question is, what is council going to do with this input? In my view, it's too significant to ignore. There wasn't due process with respect to the SRP, and it's an error that can still be corrected. So one of the reasons this matters is this stretch of West 49th is unique and is dramatically different from the other arterial corridors. No one living in this vicinity would have ever imagined a five-story development of this mass and scale along this stretch, which is why the consultation and the outreach was all the more important. So why is this stretch unique and different? Unlike the other arterial corridors in the SRP eligibility map, West 49th along the stretch is one lane either way. It's not Main Street, it's not Fraser Street. On top of that, it might be the narrowest of all the arterial corridors in the SRP at 54 feet from property line to property line compared to 73 feet on 41st or 74 feet on Granville Street. Also, the streets running north-south that intersect this stretch of West 49th are not aligned. They are all offset, or there's T-intersections, unlike the other arterial corridors in the SRP. There is not a strangle-aligned intersection along this entire stretch. And it's important to note that these offset streets were not reflected in the eligibility map that council approved. There have already been, as you heard, several pedestrians killed. There have been a few hundred crashes, according to ICBC, in just a five-year stretch starting 2017 along this narrow stretch. If this development proceeds, there will be a significant increase in traffic that this infrastructure already cannot absorb, an unacceptable added risk to pedestrians and vehicles. This stretch is unique, and I think you need to see it to believe it. So we'd welcome councillors to come down for a tour of this area if you're serious about making a fully informed decision on this development. So in conclusion, the SRP process was flawed in that there was no direct outreach to the impact of neighbors. And with the hundred of neighbors that we've been working with here, not one was aware during COVID of what was going on. And on top of that, this stretch of West 49th is unique because it is narrower, it is one lane each way, it has offset intersections, and it's already prone to accidents and casualties. You've heard the open house submissions, 6% of residents supported the development. There is a major problem here.
You're over your time, just now?
Question is what you're going to do to address this feedback. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, sir. Okay, very good. Peter Stokes is on the, are you on the line, Peter Stokes?
Hello?
Hello, Mr. Stokes?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes. Yes, please go ahead. You have five minutes.
Great, thank you. Appreciate the time to speak here. Like I said, my name's Peter Stokes, and I was born and raised in Vancouver and currently living in the Mount Pleasant neighborhood. As I mentioned, I was born and raised in the city and still call it home today. I'm calling in support of this application and project because I've been witness to the changes the city has gone through since I've been here. I currently work in the software industry, and a lot of my work is work from home since the pandemic. I first chose to live in Mount Pleasant, given how close it was to downtown. Now that I don't really have to go into the office, a lot of my time is spent around the neighborhood that I live in. After working from home for so long, I'd really like to be able to spend more time in my neighborhood, especially one with more greenery and natural green space, so I can take walks with my dog, for example, during breaks on the workday. And ideally, this would be further outside the urban core, like an area like Carersdale. I went to school at UBC over ten years ago, so I know that area very well. I used to use all the UBC trail systems, like Pacific Spirit Park, and I also used to play hockey at Thunderbird Stadium, which I still play today in the men's league. I'd love to live close to that area again. I've had such great experiences there. And again, this was where I spent my undergrad. This project being located so close would provide me that option along with just the beauty of the neighborhood. I'm asking for this project and projects like these to be supported. We have a housing crisis in the city, and we need to make more options available that aren't just in the city core. I've taken time out of my workday today to speak on behalf of myself, as well as many others who can't be here that desperately need housing options in this city. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Peter. All right, we're going to speaker number nine on the line. Is Jaclyn Loudness there? Loudness?
I'm just checking, Chair. No, Speaker Nine is not on the line.
Thanks very much. We'll go on to speaker number ten, Jasmine Gill. Jasmine Gill, are you on the line?
Yes.
Jasmine Gill?
Hi, can you hear me?
Sure can. Go ahead. You have five minutes.
All right, thank you. Hello, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the opportunity for me to speak with you this afternoon. My name is Jasmine, and I live in Vancouver. I work at Vancouver General Hospital, and I have been impacted greatly by the housing crisis in Vancouver, like many people my age. We need adequate housing for Vancouver's workforce, and I believe this project is a step in the right direction to provide it. I have lots of conversations with my coworkers about how we can't find affordable housing that allows us to live close to the hospital so we don't encounter staffing challenges. Most of my coworkers have given up, deciding to move to the suburbs. My colleagues and I are committed to providing care and to support people when they need it most, but the lack of affordable or just adequate housing means that many of us are adding long commutes to our shift. These commutes can range from an hour to two hours. And at some point, you have to decide to work at the hospital in the suburbs, and it just creates a major brain drain for Vancouver. I'm aware that the Broadway Plan aims to introduce more affordable housing options, and this will probably have the most impact on our housing options around VGH. But it's also crucial that every neighborhood in Vancouver shares the responsibility and accepts more development. I think that's especially true for the neighborhoods on the west side. We need to create a city where healthcare workers, teachers, service industry employees, and others have options to choose from. When I read the comments from people in the immediate area around where this development is proposed, I think that they cannot imagine how many working professionals are struggling to find housing in the city. To get a mortgage for the average Vancouver home, you must earn close to $250,000 annually. That's not a single-family home like the ones in this neighborhood. That's an apartment. And that's if you were able to rent at a reasonable rate and have been able to save for your own down payment. When we think about housing in our communities, it's impacting everyone, and we need to look at all our neighborhoods to address this issue. I firmly support this application, and I hope that council will join me in supporting the application. Thank you so much for your time today.
Thank you very much. Setting the clock here. Okay, looking to speaker number eleven, Trent Reader. Trent Reader, are you there?
Hello.
Very good.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Very good. Go ahead. You have five minutes. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Well, hello, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak for you today. My name is Trent, and I'm calling in today to support this proposal. I'd like to speak to you from my personal experience on the challenges faced by students like me in finding affordable housing as close to the campus. This isn't just a problem that students attending the University of British Columbia face, but young people in general in Vancouver. Finding affordable housing in Vancouver will still be a problem when I graduate, and it might force me to leave British Columbia. Sadly, UBC is surrounded by neighborhoods that have very few options for renters. For example, if you want to live off-campus but be close, your options are either very subpar or unaffordable. That means many students are forced to live far from campus with several roommates in apartments that are technically far too small, and that all adds to their stress while they're trying to get an education. I personally had to share a two-bedroom rental unit with one washroom among four other students to live close to campus, and it wasn't an experience I would wish upon anyone else. UBC is one of the best universities in the world. It attracts some of the brightest minds in Canada, and we need to make more affordable housing so that these students stay in Vancouver once they graduate and not move to Calgary or Edmonton. I often imagine not being able to earn enough to be able to live in Vancouver, let alone own a home. If we don't build more rental units and fast, this situation will only get worse. I believe this problem exists in many Vancouver neighborhoods, and we need to start addressing it now to start to make a real difference. Thank you for your time today, and I hope you too support this proposal.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Trent. Okay, then we'll go to speaker number twelve, Jimmy Denoa. Jimmy Denoa, are you there?
Hi, can you hear me?
I sure can. Go ahead. You have five minutes.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Jimmy, and I'm a resident of Vancouver and a student at the University of British Columbia. I'm calling in to express my support for this... Sorry, one moment. ...application. As a student, finding affordable rentals is challenging when there is a significant lack of rental options, especially if you don't want to live on campus. The west side of Vancouver is very limited in options. The available options for students like me are predominantly basements with limited sunlight, and that's not really conducive to studying and helping with our mental health. This application is being proposed near campus, which would make it an ideal location for students like me and people employed by the university to live. I was excited to see this application in the west side, and it gives me hope that more like it will follow in the west side for those who want more rental options here. I was looking at rentals on the west side last week, and it was slim pickings, with only four apartment options to choose from. This lacking availability is giving me anxiety, and underscores are already increasing housing crisis and the need to take action now. Just to give you a glimpse onto how anxiety-inducing and stressful this hunt can be, one of my options was a 588-square-foot, one-bedroom apartment in a newer four-story building, but they were asking for $2,700 per month. As someone who's a student using student loans to go to UBC, that's not very affordable, and there's only so many hours I can work in Vancouver to afford to live to go to school here. That's probably a higher-end option on the spectrum, but prices are a function of the lack of supply. More rentals being approved across all neighborhoods in Vancouver, including those that don't have many options to begin with, is very important if we want to tackle this housing crisis. So I really implore council to support this application and push forward these rentals. I know not every rental application can be perfect, but if we don't start improving more of them, we tend to go deeper and deeper into the hole. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Speaker. We'll move on to speaker number thirteen, Balraj Singh. Balraj, are you there?
No.
Right, back to them. Speaker number fourteen, Peter Doughty would be on the line. Peter, are you there?
Yes.
Peter, are you there?
Just need a moment to get connected.
Thank you, Clark.
Hi, can you hear me?
All right, go ahead, Peter. You have five minutes.
Hi, my name's Peter Doughty, and I'm a resident of Vancouver. And I'm calling in to support this proposal. It's clear that Carersdale is in trouble. Over the last forty years, Canada's population has grown by over fifty percent, but Carersdale's really budged. In recent years, it's actually gone down. For a neighborhood to shrink while the country grows by leaps and bounds should be a cause for extreme concern for the health of the community. The fact of the matter is that Carersdale is just aging in place. There's no room for students, workers, or families with children anymore. People who work there can't afford to live there. People who do live there are either lucky or millionaires. This development isn't going to be perfect, but it'll be affordable to people who currently can't afford to live there. And it will allow students, workers, and families to finally come back to the neighborhood. When evaluating this proposal, we really need to consider the interests of people who want to live here too. We are in a supply crisis in housing. Beyond the imperative to build more housing, this is also just a very good site for this kind of a development. It's on the Forty-Ninth Avenue arterial, which is very well-served by transit, eleven minutes to the nearest Skytrain station, transit connecting directly to UBC, as previous speakers have spoken about. It's also a five-minute walk to groceries, a pharmacy, jobs, other services. It's close to the Arbutus Greenway. It's one of Vancouver's longest greenways, and it connects this neighborhood to many other neighborhoods, connects people to jobs and shops. And it's also just a really nice greenway. I bike it a lot, and I think it's a real success story. Vancouver is trying to change mode share away from single occupancy vehicle trips and trying to bring people back to these communities that have been hollowing out. This application accomplishes both, using carrots instead of sticks to move these goals forward. It also serves climate action. Yesterday, we heard something that we've heard a lot at City of Vancouver Council meetings, which is that the climate crisis is large, and we are not on track to hit our goals. Developments like this allow us to do that. It's right to want to scrutinize climate projects, make sure that we are making the most out of limited resources. But densification and urban infill are proven to improve climate outcomes, and they don't cost anyone anything. They let people vote with their feet to live somewhere where they can get around on their feet, and they're just a win-win-win all around. So I'm really encouraged. I'm encouraged to see that this application has come through under the SRP, which I think is one of last council's best projects. And I hope that council and staff will continue to support projects coming in under the SRP. But I also want to bring up that this application could be more. It was submitted under a clause for development on arterials. Now, that clause allows up to six stories, and this is not a six-story building. So I would urge staff and council to evaluate some of the restrictions that are applied to the SRP and make sure that those restrictions are not simply invalidating buildings that would otherwise have been viable here. I also see no reason why these buildings should be stuck on arterials. Being a block north or a block south would be just as good of a location. All of the previous merits still apply. Communities that are bounded by arterials are more livable than communities that are built along them. Restricting this density to arterials leaves so much out. So in conclusion, I urge council to approve this application and consider that the merits of this application apply to essentially everything that is submitted under the SRP. It should be legal to build this by ride in all of the areas covered by the SRP and beyond. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker. All right. Let's see if Speaker Fifteen is on the line, Russell Wong. Russell Wong?
Hi, my name is Russell Wong. I'm calling to support this rezoning.
Very good.
I'm a longtime Vancouver...
Go ahead.
Sorry, can you hear me?
All right, Russell.
All right, thank you. Hi, my name is Russell Wong. I'm calling to support this rezoning. I'm a longtime Vancouver resident. I'm a member of a pro-housing group called VANA, the Vancouver Area Neighbors Association. Although I'm a homeowner myself, I know a lot of people who are not. I've talked to many, many people in Vancouver who feel like they're getting pushed out, like they're just barely holding on. What's driving this is that we don't have enough housing to go around. So then prices and rents have to rise to unbearable levels to force people to leave so that the remaining people match the limited supply of housing. We end up with low vacancy rates, high rents, and overcrowded and insecure housing. Normally, when we don't have enough of something, prices rise, but then people produce more because the incentive to build is stronger. With housing, the problem is that we've made it really slow and difficult to get permission. When we have such a terrible shortage of housing, it's hard to understand why we're still approving relatively small projects on a site-by-site basis. The Vancouver Plan basically says that we should allow the next level up, gentle density in residential neighborhoods, high rises near Skytrain stations, and in between, mid-rise apartment buildings like this one near local shopping areas. This site is right on West Forty-Ninth, and it's a five-minute walk, about 400 meters, to West Boulevard, the Savon Foods, and the Arbutus Greenway. This one project isn't going to fix the problem of housing scarcity all on its own, but if we can build a lot of projects like this near local shopping areas across Vancouver, that would really help. It's also good that this project is only replacing four single-detached houses instead of tearing down an entire rental building, so there's very little displacement of current renters. I read through the written comments from opponents. Quite a few of them basically said that they don't want the neighborhood to change. And I understand that. It's natural to fear the unknown. But we live in a society, which means we're basically participating in a large-scale system of cooperation. We all depend on the healthcare system, for example. If we refuse to build more housing, where are healthcare workers supposed to live? Trying to prevent other people from living nearby to protect the tranquility of your neighborhood may be understandable, but it's refusing to cooperate. If the only people who can afford to stay in Vancouver are homeowners who moved here more than twenty years ago, the healthcare system isn't going to be sustainable. We need more housing, especially secure rental housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker. Right, we've got Speaker Number Sixteen, supposed to be in the chamber here, Susan Dome. Susan, Susan, just come up to the microphone here, and we'll get you started in a moment.
Thank you.
You have five minutes.
Thanks. I've lived in Vancouver for over fifty-nine years. And thank you for letting me speak today. I support densification in all areas of the city to address the housing shortage, but it needs to be done in a manner that keeps our neighborhoods safe for cyclists, pedestrians, and retains some character. There's a proposed development on the south side of the 2,400 block of West Forty-Ninth that looks like a good way to further add housing units to this area. I believe it will result in five units, five new units by renovating one existing house. The recently proposed development on the 2,600 block of Marine Crescent will add another seventeen units along this corridor and will not exceed the height of the existing house on the property of thirty-nine feet and will result in eighteen units totaling 31,000 square feet. Its floor space ratio will be 0.86. The proposed 2.4 floor space ratio for the 2,325 to 2,377 West Forty-Ninth site is excessive. The mass of a 100-plus-unit, five-story building amongst family-sized and laneway homes will ruin the streetscape and family feel of the neighborhood and overwhelm this narrow stretch of Forty-Ninth Avenue. The additional traffic this development will bring to this quirky one-kilometer stretch of road will amplify the already existing safety concerns for pedestrians, cyclists, and drivers and drivers due to offstep- offset streets and cul-de-sacs. How many streets do you think there are between Arbutus Street and Southwest Marine Drive where one could cross Forty-Ninth in a straight north-south direction on bicycle or by car? Barely one, and that's McDonald Street, which has a steep hill on the south side, making it difficult to see oncoming traffic. Otherwise, every other intersection on this street is either a cul-de-sac, T-shaped, or intersections that have offset streets. These misaligned streets make crossing and entering Forty-Ninth risky, as evidenced by the accident history of this area. And I twice have had to be the one to call nine-one-one for serious accidents at the corner of Forty-Ninth and Vine. In addition, the single lanes of this section of Forty-Ninth narrow so much at points that traffic must wait behind buses while they stop. Many drivers, as a result, attempt to pass buses using the lane of oncoming traffic. The site for this proposal is at the intersection of Vine and Forty-Ninth, which is the most offset of all these askew streets in the area, where cars and bicycles use the lane of oncoming traffic to get around the buses and garbage trucks. It's at these offset intersections where most of the accidents involving pedestrians, cyclists, and vehicles have occurred. It would appear a decision to designate this stretch of Forty-Ninth as an arterial corridor was done based on someone glancing at a map and deciding it must be the same as Forty-first Avenue, Granville, Dunbar, and other arterial corridors. If those decision-makers had zoomed into their maps for more detail or taken the time to attend this stretch of Forty-Ninth in person, they would clearly see that this section is not a thoroughfare, but a narrow terminus of Forty-Ninth with the only opportunities to exit being to merge onto the backed-up Marine Drive traffic or to turn into offset side streets. This has been an issue as signs restricting turns into those side streets have been posted along this stretch for many years. This part of Forty-Ninth gets bogged down with current traffic, where buses and cars sit idling, polluting. In the mornings, heading westbound as they hit the jam of UBC traffic at Marine Drive. And again, in the afternoon, eastbound traffic from Marine Drive gets backed up at the Arbutus traffic lights, with cars turning off into side streets attempting to avoid the jam. Adding the proposed number of units with the comings and goings of associated vehicles, including those owned by new residents, Ubers, taxis, and deliveries, will increase the chaos along this bottleneck section of Forty-Ninth and ultimately increase the risk of accidents that are already an issue. This city council has the opportunity to achieve densification and affordable housing options by encouraging the development of town and row-style houses, more laneway houses, basement suites, and multi-suites in house-sized buildings. This approach would bring more homes distributed throughout the neighborhood without such an overwhelming supersized structure on four lots on a narrow street at a precarious intersection already dealing with safety issues. Thank you for your time and listening to my concerns.
Thank you, Speaker. All right, we're on to number, uh, Seventeen, Speaker on the phone, Laura Reed.
Hello.
You go ahead. You have five, you have five minutes.
Thank you. So I'm calling today in support of the project. So my name is Laura, and I do currently reside in Olympic Village. And I am looking for a new place to move that is further away and quieter than the city. I've always liked Carisdale, but it's too exclusive, and the only option is a single-family home. So as a young person, these aren't currently painful to me. I also just got a dog, and as much as I love Olympic Village, it is a little too urban. So the Arbutus Greenway near this project is actually really appealing to me, so I can take my dog on extended nature walks there. We do need more housing options in the city for people like me growing out of their current homes. And I know that I speak for many that can't be here today to speak alongside me in support of this project. So please help continue making Vancouver a beautiful place to live by supporting projects like this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. We have, uh, Speaker Eighteen next, Anna Chou-Chou. Anna, are you on the line?
Yes, I'm on the line.
Very good. You have five minutes.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Anna Chou-Chou, and I'm an electrical engineer who currently works in Vancouver. Uh, I'm representing myself, and I am a resident of Vancouver. I am also a former Carisdale resident. Um, I currently live in a high-rise near Joy Station, and the area is safe, walkable, and filled with young families. The dire need for affordable housing in Vancouver outweighs any concerns of neighborhood aesthetics, demographics, or density. And for that reason, I'm in support of this project. Many opposition's arguments, um, have come off as very elitist and gatekeeping our communities. One thousand struggle to find a place to live. Saying, "I want density, but not here," is a poor cover for the sentiment. If the entire city wants density, but not here, we end up with no density. Uh, Carisdale residents should be welcoming increased density rather than rejecting it. It is simple economics, supply and demand, that regulates price. More housing, even at market rates, means lower market rates. And we absolutely need more applications for housing developments, even if they are not perfect. If there's less capacity for amenities in the area, then these will just need to be expanded. This is not an excuse. At some point, our options will be to build more housing and expand services or end up losing all young professionals and families from Vancouver. This will increase hospital wait times and lower the quality of education as qualified healthcare workers and teachers inevitably leave the city. Rents and home values cannot increase forever. Established homeowners worry about property values decreasing. And everyone else, like me, who is young, worries about not being able to leave the current rental due to skyrocketing prices or about being rent-evicted on a daily basis. Increased density would allow for more businesses, more community members, and more walkability. Many of the concerns arise from danger due to increased traffic. I believe it is unfair to restrict housing developments because of it. Uh, because dependence on cars is a different problem entirely, that can only be tackled through improved transit infrastructure. We should be aiming to reduce our dependence on cars, not reduce density. Housing does not kill pedestrians. Cars kill pedestrians. I have heard constantly today from homeowners worried about traffic posing a danger to pedestrians. Perhaps they should give up their cars if they are part of the problem. We should welcome density and pressure city government to improve transportation. We need to support developments like this that exist on arterial roadways. Forty-Ninth has plenty of transit and bike options available, and this development is just a five-minute walk to local shopping and transit. It is imperative to develop housing in areas with good transit. Having single-family homes next to an arterial roadway is a gross misuse of space. I would even go further and say that zoning needs to be abolished altogether so that supply can regulate demand, unimpeded by this type of slow consultation process. Um, so yes, I firmly support the application, and I hope the council goes well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, Speaker? He's sat here. All right, so, uh, Number Nineteen, uh, is Jordan Curtinu on the line?
Hi there. Can you hear me?
You bet. You have five minutes.
Awesome. Uh, first of all, thank you very much, Mayor Ken Simmons, council here, for taking the time uh, to hear the thoughts and opinions of, uh, community members that are impacted by today's topic of discussion. Uh, my name is Jordan. I'm a young professional living in downtown Vancouver at the time and have been for many years. Um, I'd just like to start by saying I'm in full support of this rezoning application and hope to see more projects like this in the future. Uh, Carisdale's a neighborhood I've always been very familiar with, and, uh, often the, the idea of, uh, ever being able to call a, a place, uh, calling that neighborhood home for myself has a long time been an idea out of mind and, um, just not really an option, given the current housing stock available in the neighborhood as it is today. Um, projects like this and more like them uh, allow other people like myself, young professionals, um, an opportunity to, uh, you know, raise their own families in, uh, the type of, uh, neighborhood that, uh, you know, either we may have grown up in, uh, where we have other family, uh, in the same area. And, um, i- I think it's really important that, uh, we have a council and, and city that supports projects like this, um, with this one and in the future. I'd love the opportunity to call this neighborhood home, uh, close to UBC, where I attended university, um, you know, the just, uh, amount of, uh, uh, natural amenities that we have in this area here, UBC, the trail network all around there, um. It would be really something truly exciting that would get me excited to, 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 to be able to call this, uh, neighborhood home. And I think it would be, um, in the best interest of, um, many community members like myself, like other young professionals, uh, a chance to, uh, to see that, um, as a potential real opportunity to be, uh, to be here. So, um, I'm in support of it. I hope, uh, I hope, uh, you guys will find the same, uh, conclusion uh, through this process, and, uh, I look forward to, uh, watching this application, um, move forward.
All right. Thank you very much, Speaker.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, uh, on to Speaker Number Twenty, Duncan Findley. Are you on the line, Duncan?
Hi there. Yeah, I'm here.
Very good. You have five minutes.
Awesome. Well, thanks for taking the, uh, the time to let me speak here. Um, as I mentioned, my name's Duncan Findley. I'm currently living in Fairview area. My girlfriend and I love going for walks, and it's been great being relatively close to the water so that we can access the seawall. That being said, we're outgrowing our place really quickly. We don't have a balcony, and I'd really love getting easier access to the outdoors other than walking ten minutes down to the water. Carisdale's always seemed like a great option, but I never really thought about it too closely, as it's always seemed to be out of reach and exclusive. And looking at it further, it really does fit our lifestyle perfectly. Personally, I'm a massive golfer. Macquarie Golf Course is one of my personal favorites. Um, having it just down the street, some deep, uh, down the street, excuse me, and being within a five-minute drive there would significantly cut my driving time. For my girlfriend, having the small little shops along the West Boulevard are an amazing addition, all within walking distance, just a few walks away. I'm hoping people think this project is as well-received as us, because we really need more housing options in great locations like this. Thank you so much.
Thank you ver- thank you very much, Speaker. All right, getting close to the end here, um, Speaker Number Twenty-One, Chris Clark, are you on the line?
Uh, I am. Can you hear me?
Sure can. You have five minutes.
Okay, yeah, I'd just like to say that, uh, I'm a resident of this neighborhood, and, uh, I'm in favor of this. Um, you know, quite frankly, listening, I'm really disappointed in, uh, the neighbors that I've, you know, known and many that, that, uh, I've enjoyed talking to and hearing that so many of my neighbors really think about, you know, intersection angles, safety, shadows, parking, traffic, water, you know, my driveway, my view, my neighborhood. Um, and they've got lots of facts and lots of emotions and really no compassion for renters or anyone who doesn't already own property. I'm hearing that everyone is pro-housing, but no one is pro-densification when it actually affects them. They won't give up their cars. They won't give up anything that they have in order to make space for the people that live around them, that work with them, that maybe work for them. Um, so I really hope that this goes forward because it's something that so many people need, um, and with that, it's their suffering. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Speaker. Okay, uh, is Speaker Number Twenty-Two on the line, Owen Brady?
Hi, can you hear me?
Sure can. You have five minutes.
Great, um. Good afternoon, Chair Claston and Council. My name's Owen Brady, and I support this proposal. I will admit that I really wish that the incentives in the SRP were adjusted so that this and many other buildings were getting proposed as six stories instead of five. Uh, it's clear at this point that the point-three FSR increase in maximum floor space is not enough of an incentive uh, to get those below-market homes, uh, without additional densities anyway. Uh, twenty percent of zero is zero homes. So, but this isn't the proponent's fault, so please don't hold it against them. Uh, I'm glad to hear some people saying this isn't a real arterial street. We shouldn't be forcing apartments onto arterial streets. Uh, this is not a large building. Uh, yesterday, you heard that the city is unlikely to meet its climate goal for complete communities by twenty-thirty. Proposals like this, within walking distance of transit and a major grocery store, are a big part of the solution. The people who will live in this building will both benefit from and provide a source of demand for additional services nearby, enabling expansion of walkable communities away from current commercial notes. We need a lot more retail and public services, but apartments like this in the neighborhoods are a key piece of the puzzle. More important is to not push even more people into suburban sprawl. Housing action is climate action. Buildings like this will also allow our economy to grow, providing the labor and tax base to support Canada's rapidly aging population. Finally, projects like this should not require rezoning. This process and the pipeline of processes on both ends of it is a duplicative wa- waste of time. I will leave it there. Thank you for your consideration and my comments.
All right. Thank you, caller, Speaker. I will go to see if Alex Helper is on the line, Speaker Number Twenty-three. Alex, are you on the line? Alex Helper, are you on the line?
We're just checking into it.
You're good.
Can you hear me?
Yes, uh, go ahead. You have five minutes.
Well, thank you so much for the opportunity of providing my perspective as a resident of Carisdale. I live in the area with my family and will be directly impacted by this building. To be clear, I'm speaking in opposition to this development. And while I appreciate the need for affordable housing and densification, the scale of this development, five stories, a hundred to a hundred and forty units, is entirely inconsistent with the character of the neighborhood and on an already unsafe stretch of road. Remember, this would replace four family homes with a hundred and forty units. I do have compassion, of course. There is, but there's a way to densify moderately and with care, like the other proposed developments in the area. My main concern is safety. This is a narrow, one-lane street unlike any other arterial corridors in the SRP. I wasn't aware that Forty-Ninth had been designaten- designated an arterial corridor, which I think is wholly inappropriate, given the narrow streets and poor visibility. There's already been a number of casualties and accidents in recent years. An earlier caller and neighbor mentioned there were three pedestrian deaths and over two hundred accidents in recent years on this stretch of road. There's already significant congestion at the intersection of Forty-Ninth and West Boulevard without adding a hundred-plus buildings. My three kids cycle along Forty-Ninth Avenue on a regular basis to and from school, and if this building moves forward, I cannot see how they could bike safely. Other speakers have already spoken about the offset streets and the difficult visibility. The mass and scale and its increased traffic are unsafe. I don't find the safety response that was made earlier in the hearing at all adequate. I cannot imagine how any engineering firm could come to the conclusion that that size of a building could possibly be safe in that location. I encourage you to view the application through a safety lens for families and residents like mine and kids that go to school in the area. I believe that safety needs to be reassessed, and the scale of the development needs to be rethought and reduced. Last, like the vast majority of the people that have called in, in favor of this to date, don't live in the area and are really just in favor of densification. And I think there's a duty to listen to the residents about our valid safety concerns regarding this section of Forty-Ninth. Thank you.
Excuse the interruption, Chair. We're just a little short on quorum. Could, would Counselor Joe be able to turn his video? Thank you. One, two, three. Okay, we're good.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, uh, all right, so we are going to make a second call for speakers. If there are any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free one-eight-three-three-three-five-three-eight-six-one-zero, followed by participant code one-zero-six-one-four-four-five-pound for the close of the speakers list. The phone number will be tweeted out and made available on the live stream. Any speakers in the council chamber, please come forward to the podium before the close of the speakers list. Speakers will have five minutes to make their comments and should, should limit their comments to the merits of the report being considered. We do? Okay, very good. Okay, so I'm gonna go back over the missed speakers. No, we don't? All right. Okay. Not for public hearing. Thank you very much. Okay, so we are, uh, just going to see if there are any other speakers that will come on the line? Are there any speakers that are coming on the line?
There are speakers on the line, but we need to, um, if we could take a recess after this third call, so we could get their names, please.
Okay. All right. So, um, should you, uh, clerk, should I just, um, do the third call for speakers? And then we can recess? Okay. All right, so I'm gonna- All right, so I'm gonna call a third time, uh, to confirm if there are any speakers. Uh, this is a third and final call. If there are any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free one eight three 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 five three eight six one zero, followed by participant code one zero six one four four five pound before the close of the speakers list. The phone number will be tweeted out and made available on the live stream. Any speakers in the council, uh, in the council chamber, please come forward to the podium. Right, so we will take a, just a short, uh, five minutes, five-minute recess, and we'll just get our speakers on the line, uh, ready to go.
Chair, I just want to raise the fact that, um, those of us online can no longer hear the proceedings.
Just about to say the same.
Counselor, can you just repeat that? I didn't hear it.
Uh, yes, sorry, thank you. Uh, personal privilege is, um, just a point of personal privilege is that we can't hear the proceedings at all.
Okay, yes, sorry, Counselor. For those on the line, we're just, we've got, um, some additional speakers that are calling in, and we're just documenting their names quickly so we can, uh, just read them out and have them go through. It's not a long list, but it's just taking, uh, uh, an extra little bit of time. My apology to all those who are, uh, following along right now.
Okay, thank you very much. I, I thought we had gotten started again, so, uh, no, no problem at all. We're still.
Just about there.
Okay.
All right, we're going to get underway. Everybody, uh, just making sure we have quorum for the meeting here. Looks like we're good to go. Fantastic. Um, I'm going to just, uh, maybe have the Pete, the person on the line identify themselves. Very good. Um, uh, caller, can you just identi- uh, say your name and whether you're a resident of the city of Vancouver? Caller, can you hear me?
I don't know if anyone can hear. It's not clear which caller is being addressed.
Uh, well, we're gonna, we're gonna have you. So, can you just, uh, say your name and whether you're from, live in, reside in the city of Vancouver, please?
Oh, sure. I think I jumped the line. Um, but my name is Michelle Tisa, and I live in the city of Vancouver.
You have, thank you very much. You have five minutes, Michelle. Go ahead.
Great, thank you so much. Um, I didn't plan to call in today, so I'm just gonna apologize, but I'll be less eloquent than many of the speakers. Currently prepared really thoughtful statements, but I felt compelled to call after listening to so many of my neighbors opposing this very modest project. So, um, I just want to start by saying that I've spent thirty-one of my thirty-six years in Carisdale. Uh, I live just a few blocks from this proposed development with my family. Um, my household includes my elderly parents, who've lived in Carisdale for almost fifty years, and who own the home that I live in, and my young daughter. Um, and, you know, I, I'm gonna try not to repeat too many of the existing points, but I, I do wanna echo every speaker who's pointed out that we're in the midst of a really severe housing shortage in Vancouver, particularly purpose-built rental housing like this, which fills a really urgent need for those who can't afford the astronomical housing prices, particularly in a neighborhood like Carisdale. Um, and, you know, on average, houses in this neighborhood cost millions of dollars. Even a market rental rate of three thousand dollars a month for a two-bedroom is far more attainable than a mortgage payment of ten thousand or fourteen thousand dollars a month. Um, I, I think it's a tragedy that so many people can't afford to live in Vancouver in any neighborhood, uh, and I think we should be doing as much as possible to make all of our neighborhoods more accessible, um, to our citizens. Um, I'm also shocked by the number of people who said that the development is out of scale with the neighborhood. Five stories directly is very modest. And in the streets around my home, like Forty-third, Balsam, uh, Vine, there are many buildings that are much taller. There's ten and twelve-story apartment buildings. There's a, a ten-story apartment building across the alley from me. So, to me, it seems very, uh, in line with this neighborhood already. And many of these buildings that are taller than this proposed development are also on narrower streets. So I'm a bit confused by the statement that Forty-Ninth itself is too narrow for this proposal. Um, and I've heard a lot of concerns about the road safety. And, you know, I, I strongly agree with all of my neighbors that we should be making our roads safer. Um, it sounds to me like the safety issues with Forty-Ninth really precede this development and should be tackled separately from any proposed development at all. Um, denying a hundred to a hundred and forty households a place to live is not gonna make that street safer. So, we should absolutely be putting in more streetlights, more crosswalks, uh, attempting to slow traffic to make it safer for cyclists and pedestrians. Um, but I don't see any reason why that safety issue can't be tackled in tandem with creating more places to live. Um, and, I mean, lastly, I've, I've also heard a lot of opposition about the character of the neighborhood and people concerned that the neighborhood is going to change. But having spent most of my life here, I have seen it change a lot, and I don't think for the better. Um, it's become so much more expensive, become emptier, uh, it's become a lot older. No one in my demographic can afford to live here, nobody with young children, no students. Um, the only people my age here are people like me who have parents who bought in this neighborhood like four years, fifty years ago, and it was still affordable. And I think that's just a real, like I said, a real tragedy. Um, it's a really great neighborhood. I feel really lucky to live here. It has beautiful parks, it has great schools. Forty-first is just a great shopping district, and I just think more people should be able to access that, um, of all income levels, of all ages, of all households. Um, and, you know, I think those concerns need to count for more than the worries of few very secure homeowners who are concerned about shadows and property values. You know, a, a previous speaker mentioned that there's households for a hundred or a hundred and forty people on the line. Um, and I think that we need to be considering those households too, even if they don't currently have a boy. So, thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Speaker. Uh, okay, we're gonna go to the line again. The next person. Can you tell me your name?
Uh, hi there, am I up?
Yes, please. Can you tell? Yes, please. Can you tell me your name if you live in the city of Vancouver?
Great, thank you. My name is Peter Waldkirk. Yes, I live in the city of Vancouver and I'm speaking in support of today's proposal.
Thank you, go ahead.
Great, thank you. So, you know, I think it's amazing that we are looking at a proposal here to replace four detached houses with a rental apartment. Because this is exactly what the city needs. You know, a previous speaker said that replacing these four houses with over a hundred rental apartments was somehow a bad thing. I think it's a great thing, because over this building's lifetime, it will provide secure, safe housing for hundreds of people. Over the course of the building, maybe even thousands. This is good. We have a housing shortage crisis, and this is what the solution looks like. You know, a couple of other speakers said that you should think about the people most affected by this proposal, by which I think they meant the existing neighbors. But I disagree with that. I think that the people most affected by your decision today will be those hundreds or thousands of people who will or will not have a home in this neighborhood because of what you decide today. You know, we all know we're in a housing crisis, a housing shortage crisis, and Carisdale is a good example of how we got into this mess. You've heard about how the neighborhood is basically stagnant and has actually been shrinking. In particular, it's seen a huge decline in the number of children. And that's because Carisdale basically stopped building new housing and welcoming new neighbors in the seventies. Now, I've seen this firsthand. I grew up in Carisdale. My dad still lives there in the same house I grew up in, just a short walk away from this proposal on Forty-second Avenue. And over the course of my lifetime, I've seen this stagnation firsthand. You know, my parents, they stopped doing trick-or-treat on Halloween over twenty years ago because there just weren't any neighbor, kids in the neighborhood anymore. You know, we have thousands of people, hundreds of thousands of people moving into this country, and Carisdale needs to do its fair share to welcome those people and to build new homes for our young people, for newcomers, for all sorts of people. It needs to do its fair share too. And not just today, but to make up for the decades of exclusion that I have seen over my lifetime. Look at the existing apartment area in Carisdale. Those homes were opposed at the time they were built, and that sort of contributed to the downzoning in the seventies that stopped more apartments from being built and basically put an end to new housing in Carisdale. So imagine telling the people who live in those homes today, "Carisdale, we better off if your home didn't exist." "Carisdale, we better off if your home had never been built." Well, that's ridiculous. So don't say that to the neighbors of tomorrow. Now, I'll just end by saying, you know, that a simple, low-rise apartment like this, which is absolutely a very modest building, shouldn't require the mayor, council, senior staff to all get together to decide whether an individual building like this should be built. That's how we got into the housing crisis, and this is what inefficiency looks like. It's not enough just to speed up the process if the process itself is broken. Low-rise apartments like this belong in every neighborhood, on every street, not just arterial roads everywhere. Mayor and council should just simply should not be in the business of deciding individual buildings on a site-by-site basis. And individual residents who just want a place to hopefully live in the city one day shouldn't have to show up to beg council to legalize a few homes. And until this changes through real reform, as long as we keep on carrying through with this sort of broken process, we're not gonna make any real progress in dealing with the housing crisis. So please support these homes and the people who will call this neighborhood home one day. Help bring some new neighbors and some new life to Carisdale. Thank you. Those are my comments.
Thank you, caller. All right, see if we have somebody else on the line. Hello, is there anybody there?
Hello?
Hi there, can you give us your name, please, and whether you live in the city of Vancouver?
Hi, my name is Joshua Redmond and I live in the city of Vancouver.
Thanks very much. You've got five minutes.
Hi, I'm calling in support of the proposal today. I'm not gonna beat on the drum of supply and demand. I think it's already been covered. Something I really wanted to touch on is the safety concerns in the area. I live around Forty-third and Balsam Street in an area that another caller has already mentioned, has several tower developments that are up and over ten stories tall. None of the safety concerns that have been raised by other callers are anything that I've observed in my ten years of living there. If traffic is an ongoing concern in the region, I would suggest that the city closely looks with engineering firms at traffic solutions that are implemented in other areas of the city successfully. There are plenty of streets that are in opportune position due to earlier development decisions that can be converted into right-turn-only and no-exit streets. This will resolve at least some of the issues with the direction that vehicles are going to prioritize them onto other streets such as Marine Crescent or Arbutus to utilize Fifty-first or going from Arbutus onto Forty-seventh, further up towards the north. The road corridor itself is identical to both Balsam Street and Marine Drive, locations which have already got tower developments that are up and over five stories tall. Further, as long as parking is adequately considered as part of the building development permit and is taken below grade to cover the residents that are gonna be introduced to the neighborhood, parking will not get worse. This is something that's been observed over as Metro Town has been developing with towers that are significantly taller than anything that is being proposed here. Further to the bike route concerns, there are several other bike routes that are outside of Forty-Ninth. I don't think that this is an actual concern. I typically commute into work out towards Burnaby using my bike. Forty-Ninth is not a route option I would ever consider, and there are plenty of alternatives. That's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, caller. All right, do we have somebody else on the line?
Hello?
Hi there, can you just say your name and whether you live in the city of Vancouver?
Hi, my name is Justin and, yeah, I live at the house in question, two-three-seven-seven West Forty-Ninth.
Very good. You have five minutes.
Okay, I just wanna say, I don't have a prepared speech or anything like that. I wasn't given any sort of notice in terms of this hearing. Nothing came in the mail. I didn't get a phone call or anything like that. Just saw a tweet put out by the Vancouver City Clerk mentioning this address, so I called in. I just wanna say, I just have a couple of points. First off, at the house in question where I live here, two-three-seven-seven West Forty-Ninth, it's a large house. There's quite a few of us living there. We're a mix of UBC students and international workers. The main, the top floor, there's four bedrooms. They all have private bathrooms, so there's two people living in each of those rooms, so that's eight. On the main floor, there's two bedrooms, and there's four people living there, so that's twelve. And then in the basement, there's a couple, so that's fourteen. So that's fourteen people living at two-three-seven-seven West Forty-Ninth. And I can tell you, the house on the left, there's a bunch of guys living there. Forget the address. I see them out in the backyard all the time. There's at least, at least ten of them, you know, that I would guess. I see a bunch of them in the backyard. I don't know however many, but it's a similar type house, so I imagine it's similar amount of people. The other houses, I'm not sure. So I just wanna say that you're gonna be displaced from quite a few people if, you know, this were to go ahead. And I, you know, I totally understand the people thing that we need more, you know, rental housing in the city, ideally under market rate. Totally agree with you there. Totally, a hundred percent agree with you. But my point more generally is that we cannot build our way out of this crisis. We've been doing this for thirty years. I'm born in Vancouver. I've spent my whole life living in Vancouver. I'm thirty-nine years old. Lived in Vancouver my whole life. I've seen the city change in front of my eyes. And I can tell you that all the callers that are speaking for the measure are either in one of two camps. The first camp, I would say, is the developer shell camp, or they're standing to gain financially in some way. The second camp is people just are buying the myth that we can build our way out of this crisis. And that's a developer narrative that's been pushed. And unfortunately, along with the media, people have bought that myth, hook, line, and sinker. We've, and you can look up this fact, Canada, or sorry, Vancouver has built more housing over the last thirty years per capita than any other major city in North America. And what has that gotten us? That hasn't gotten us anything in terms of affordability. All things have done is skyrocketed in terms of affordability. Why has that happened? Because of the incentive for speculators to buy property in Vancouver, in B.C., in Canada. Especially in this city, because of the fact that we have so many students that come here from other countries that need housing, and they're prepared to pay, and you can make a fortune by buying these properties and renting them out. And my advice, my advice to all the people who called in in support of the motion, I understand this is rental, a rental property, but I'm speaking in more general terms. Don't you wanna own? Why do you wanna, why would you ever wanna rent? You know, why would you ever wanna rent when your house can be taken away from you in a moment's order?
Caller?
In a moment, yes, yes.
Hi, caller.
I'm sorry, I'm ranting. I'm sorry, I'm ranting. I didn't, I don't prefer.
Okay.
But I just wanna speak in general terms, okay? I just wanna say that we cannot build our way out of this crisis, okay?
Thanks, caller. We have to sort of, we have to have our callers speak to the item itself and
Okay, I'm just gonna say, I'm attending.
make general observations. So anyway, you're.
But I'm attending from that home, and I didn't get any sort of notice that this hearing was gonna happen. I just wanna say that as well.
Right, thank you very much. Okay, we'll see.
Okay.
Very good. We'll see if we can move on to the next call. Caller, are you there?
Hello?
Hi there, can you give us your name, please, and whether you live in the city of Vancouver?
For sure. My name is Julia Mantasci and I'm a resident of Vancouver, and I'm calling in support of this application.
Very good. You've got five minutes.
Sure, thank you. Yeah, I mainly wanted to briefly mention that this is honestly quite a modest and conservative development, and it's definitely much needed. When I was housing, when I was looking for housing about three years ago, when I was studying at UBC, there still wasn't even an option. There weren't really that many legal options, and I looked around for several months and I wasn't able to find anything. I would have loved to have a building like this. That would have been an option for me. And what I mainly wanted to highlight is that this process shouldn't really be necessary for such a development like this one. People shouldn't have to take time off work to fight to have more rentals in a housing crisis. Like right now, I had to take time off so I could call in and show some support. And, you know, as the previous speaker mentioned, there's fourteen people in one of these houses. Isn't this a prime example of a housing shortage? Like, we should be building more rentals. These will be totally used, and I don't think I'll ever afford a home, but I can at least afford a rental. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, caller. All right, see if we have anybody else on the line.
Hello? Yes.
Hello, sir. Go ahead and please say your name and whether you live in the city of Vancouver. You'll have five minutes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Go ahead. What's your name?
Oh, sorry, thank you. My name is Patrice Steeman. I'm a resident of Vancouver. I live on West Forty-eighth and Sixth Street, which is about two blocks away from this proposal. I would like just to maybe bring us all back to the initial point that's been discussed lengthy about road safety. And we're talking about lives, and I don't know if we should agree upon that lives should be overseeing any conversations around rental and affordability of housing. I think that's something that I'm urging the council, please, to revisit in order to reassess this proposal. The second point I'd like to mention is my wife is currently part of the PAC, meaning of the Maple Group School, as the co-chair. And in a recent conversation with the principal of Maple Group School, we've been made aware that currently the lists of, the waiting list for students is about a hundred students waiting for a place in Maple Group Elementary School. I would like to know how well the conversations with the Board of School of Vancouver has been held, and we have verified those numbers. Another point I'd like to mention is density comes with a price as well in terms of infrastructures for children. I have two young children, eight-year-old and three-year-old. And as it stands right now, it's impossible for us to find any spot available for activities to the Carisdale Community Centre, which is completely full. So again, I would be consider also this type of infrastructure and services available to the Carisdale community. And last but not foreleast, as much as I also understand the complexity and the problem about housing in Vancouver, I'd like to just agree with all of you that there is not such a thing as affordability today. When I hear students from UBC calling earlier and being in favor of this project, my question to them is, can you even afford the housing at UBC? Shoebox in UBC for students range around sixteen hundred dollars a month, which is, in my opinion, much more affordable than twenty-five hundred dollars a one-bedroom in this proposal. So I hope that we take into consideration those points, and in my opinions, they're really pretty soon. And I think that should be really a conversation and an arrangement from the city council as you walk into making a decision. Thank you.
Sir, before I let you go, are you still there?
Yes.
Can you just repeat your name for us? We just weren't able to hear it. And if you have to, you might have to spell it for us. Thank you.
Of course. My name is Patrice, P-A-T-R-I-C-E, last name Steeman, S-T-E-I-M-A-N-N. And I also provided submissions, unwriting submissions to the council as well.
Very good. Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I think we have one more call. Caller, are you there?
Hello?
Hi there, caller. Can you just identify yourself by name and whether you live in the city of Vancouver, and then you have five minutes to speak.
Yes, I'm, I live in the city of Vancouver. I actually live in Carisdale, and my name's Shashana Krahl. I wasn't planning on calling in, but I've been watching, and I just wanted to mention a couple of things. A point worth reiterating is that all of these people that are calling in in support do not live in the area of Carisdale, except for one or two. I've lived in Carisdale my entire life for almost fifty years. And the people that are calling in are simply in favor of rentals without any regard for the specific location. They keep saying that our neighborhood has, you know, gone downhill and is not growing, and I totally disagree with that. Our neighborhood, we're right on the corner of Forty-Ninth and Balsam. Our neighborhood is filled with kids and young families. And we are already in an area where there are plenty of rental apartments in Carisdale right now. And they, these apartments are definitely at lower rents, and it's not solved any of our affordable rental issues. And this isn't a hearing on whether we are for or against densification. It's whether or not it makes sense on this particular stretch. I'm not gonna go over all the safety concerns that we have for our kids, which I think are very valid. And I do not think that this is a place to put an apartment. There are plenty of areas with apartments already that could be redeveloped. And they're already zoned for redevelopment. The support that everybody is calling in for is in favor of rentals generally, and we get that. But this is not a referendum on rental and density. It's a question of whether or not this particular rental building makes sense. And as you can hear from the amount of people that live in the area, it doesn't make sense. And I would love to find an engineer that has come down to our stretch of Forty-Ninth to look at what we are talking about, that can really say safely that this is a good idea. I think we have to address the infrastructure concerns that we have with our main street, like Forty-Ninth, like Thirty-third, that are one-way streets, and they cannot support a building of this size.
Thank you very much, caller. Okay, just checking one more time with the clerk if we have any other callers on the line.
Just checking, Chair, if you could just give me a moment.
Okay. Okay.
Yes, I'm hearing, um, we've heard all the speakers that are on the line for this item number one.
Okay, thank you. Okay, uh, so seeing that there are no additional speakers, the speakers list is now closed. Since few public comments have been received since noon today, I'm now also closing the receipt of public comments. Clerk, we have one, we have, uh, I've already closed, but, um, I just hit the back there. Sir, okay, we can, we can, we can, uh, we can open it up for, for you and then we'll, we'll close it. So just come to the podium there and, and we'll give you five minutes, go ahead.
My name is Gabe, Gabel Hirsch, I lived in Carisdale for twenty years. Uh, I'm absolute in favor of increasing density, density, uh, the rental, affordable rental. But when you look at that property, what I think should be considered is to downsize it. It's completely disapport disproportionate, the size of this project with respect to the location. It will be actually, when you, when you walk in the neighborhood, you see it would be five stories high, which is way anything which is in this neighborhood. You could argue down the road, we are building the same kind of five-story homes and that's probably the proposal of the city, but I think it completely outweighs what this particular, um, um, how would I say the? It will change the, completely the complexity of this neighborhood. So what I would suggest is that the city looks at other options like townhouse, uh, developments or three stories. And I'm traveling down Dunbar and I'm traveling down Oak Street and most of these developments, if not all of them, are three-story at the most. So while I'm not against that there is, should be an increase in rental and this certainly can be developed in a higher rental kind of, uh, development, it should be considered to downgrade it to what is acceptable to this neighborhood. Thank you.
I mentioned my name.
Thank you, thank you sir. Okay, so, uh, with that, we are now officially closed, so, uh, I'll just ask if the applicant has any clo- closing comments? So seeing none, okay. Uh, staff, do you have any closing comments? We are getting, seeing none there. Uh, council, do you have any questions for staff this time? This is, so I'm just, I see people coming on the queue right now, but I want to make sure, are these questions for staff or the, uh, okay, very good.
Chair, just a point of order, uh, my name is coming up as Mayor Sin.
Okay.
But I'd like to, uh, ask questions of staff.
Very good, all right, we'll make sure that you.
And confirm I am not Mayor Sin.
Um, appropriately labeled. Okay, um, I'll bring on, uh, councillor Carr, go ahead.
Uh, first question is around, um, the transportation and safety issues that we've heard. Um, I read through the conditions of approval and I don't seem to see much around transportation safety. I'm wondering if we need to add a condition of approval, um, that has to do with increasing safety for pedestrians and cars and cyclists and given the accidents in the area, um, and the concerns raised by the public.
Uh, thank you for your question councillor Carr, just to clarify, uh, in terms of the engineering conditions, um, required in terms of transportation improvements, the site is required to deliver, um, kind of various public ground and transportation improvements directly adjacent to their site. So that does include things like widened sidewalks, um, bulges at the corner of Vine and Forty-Ninth as well as improved lighting at the, adjacent to the site in the intersection. They are also required to deliver a seven-foot dedication, uh, of the building line south of their site that'll also, um, facilitate future additional improvements.
Yeah.
I will also note, sorry, um, just as quickly, separately from the site as well, um, there has been a recently installed, um, flashing amber pedestrian crossing just one block over at you. And there is, um, we are aware of various transportation challenges and we've heard a lot, um, this afternoon. So there is an ongoing in-house review actually of Forty-Ninth where we're assessing different things like the sightlines and different opportunities for crossing, um, and improving a lot of those things that we've heard today.
So, um, I think what I'm hearing is you're working on this and, uh, there are some changes coming that are not specified, um, well, some of them are, the bulge and everything like that are specified in the, uh, but in, in the, uh, conditions of approval, but, um, that you are listening to the conversation today and, um, are going to take that back in terms of increasing, potentially increasing measures around public safety.
Yeah, that's absolutely right. So we know that the transportation conditions aren't, you know, solely focused at this one intersection or this one site, there are, um, various things that we are aware of and that is an ongoing, um, review that's happening right now.
Okay. Um, secondly, it's another, uh, engineering question, um, uh, there was a speaker that certainly talked about, um, uh, water runoff with the, um, removal of trees, uh, impacts on, on sewage, uh, the sewage system and the drainage system. Um, are there sufficient conditions of approval around, uh, making sure that, um, and, and keeping trees? Are there conditions of approval around making sure we keep as many trees as possible and, uh, and, and, uh, are dealing with the, the water issues?
Thanks for the question. Um, first, addressing the trees, the Arborist report does come as part of the development permit process, so we don't, um, have a full sense of how many trees would be proposed for removal. Um, the SRP design guidelines does definitely prioritize tree retention as much as possible. Um, and part of that is, you know, limiting the parquet to being under the building, um, and maximizing, uh, space for soil infiltration. Um, with respect to the rainwater management question, um, probably the biggest piece there is the applicant would be required to submit a finalized rainwater management plan at the time of development permit. Um, and a key piece of that is that the discharge into the sewer, uh, is to be no greater than, uh, pre-development standard. Um, and they're encouraged to, um, put in measures such as infiltration systems, um, landscaping, uh, rainwater management, uh, rainwater harvesting tanks and things like that. So those are all things that are encouraged as part of their rainwater management plan. Um, my colleague in transportation also mentioned the curb bulge at Forty-Ninth and Vine and that is supposed to also be a, a bio-retention bulge. Um, so that would take care of some of the rainwater off of the street.
Okay, great, thank you. That's it for my questions.
Thank you councillor Carr, uh, councillor Dominado.
Uh, thank you chair and, um, and thank you for the, the presentations and hearing from speakers. I, I did want to follow up, um, councillor Carr asked my questions around some of the traffic safety, pedestrian safety concerns, but I did want to follow up some, a number of the speakers, uh, referred to inadequate consultation on this project. I'm just wondering if staff could address that, if there was anything different in terms of the process we undertook in terms of notification, uh, both on the city's part and also on the applicant's part, just to better understand that and if, if there's anything unique here, uh, in terms of the process.
Comment was on the SRP. How in this development?
Okay, also on the SRP then. No, no, uh, no.
Yeah, we can maybe parse out those two sides, sure.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so there, there was nothing unique necessarily about the notification or engagement process for this specific rezoning application. Um, I think as I mentioned previously, it followed our standard CD1, uh, notification process. Um, I know there was a comment about, uh, a tenant not being notified. Um, it is our standard process that the, uh, the, the postcard does go out, uh, within a two-block radius of the site to both tenants and homeowners. Um, and there also would be the site signs, um, in, in this case. So it, it was our standard process for the rezoning application. Um, maybe I'll pass it to my colleague in housing to talk about the SRP engagement specifically.
That'd be great, thank you.
Um, yeah, I can address the, uh, public engagement and consultation that was conducted during the development, um, of the secured rental policy. Um, I would describe it as being very much in line with our standard practice. Um, the work, um, in developing the updated secured rental policy launched, um, shortly after, uh, council approved the updated Housing Vancouver Strategy in 2017, um, and really got underway in earnest in 2019. Uh, and in the years from, uh, late, um, or pardon me, from early 2019 up until the public hearing that was held in late 2021, um, we did multiple rounds of public engagement, um, that involved roughly thousand, uh, twenty thousand touchpoints with the community. Uh, we did hold six in-person, um, information sessions at a variety of locations across the city, in addition to online information sessions that were held after, uh, public health measures related to the COVID-19 pandemic precluded further in-person engagement. Uh, we had hundreds of people attend the in-person events and dozens more attend the online events. Uh, we had a significant amount of people engaged via our, um, online Shape Your City webpage related to the project and we provided multiple rounds of notification via that platform, via other city mailing lists, including those related to the Vancouver Plan, Housing Vancouver Strategy and other housing initiatives. Uh, we held online information sessions where we provided one-on-one opportunities for staff to engage members of the community interested in better understanding the proposal. Um, and leading up to the public hearing in November of 2021, um, we also tried to make sure as many people were aware of this work as possible in the forthcoming decision before council, uh, through an intensive social media campaign that involved, um, posting on, uh, city media outlets as well as, uh, paid media on a variety of platforms.
Um, thank you for that summary, I, I appreciate that. Um, just one more question, just in the context of, um, I also heard some questions raised around, um, Forty-Ninth and the designation of an arterial, I, I believe it's been designated as an arterial under our transportation plans for quite some time, but could you speak to that briefly? And the focus of, um, having sort of higher density related to public transit?
Yeah, absolutely. I can, uh, provide an initial answer and then maybe pass it to, uh, my colleague in transportation, but, uh, Forty-Ninth Avenue, um, has been identified as an arterial route for the purposes of our, uh, rental incentive policies for over ten years. Um, it goes back to a designation, um, in the previous Affordable Housing Choices interim rezoning policy, which did identify Forty-Ninth as an eligible, uh, route along which proposals for rezoning for up to six-story rental projects could be considered. Uh, that designation was carried forward and reinforced as part of the secured rental policy process. And in particular, it relates to the fact that that route does have TransLink rap, or TransLink bus service that runs along it, in addition to its other, uh, people-moving characteristics. Um, and that is a core tenet of the secured rental policy in terms of the locational considerations that do seek to prioritize the location of new rental housing in areas located close to transit, shopping, services and other amenities. And Rosemary, I don't know if you had anything to add?
Yeah, I met time, so, thank you.
Councillor Monigoo.
Thanks chair, sorry, my voice is a little funky today. Um, I appreciate councillor Carr's question regarding, uh, the safety aspect, I wanted to touch on it as well. Um, I was rather surprised to hear, uh, some large numbers that were floated around today, like in excess of a hundred and something crashes and that, but, um, in my previous life, I, I don't recall, uh, I spent five years as a collision investigator and I don't recall this stretch specifically being, uh, a high crash stretch. When I look at the publicly available data, um, and I compare that stretch between Arbutus and McDonald, uh, to say Thirty-third Avenue, it's less than that. Uh, when I compare it to Forty-first and King Edward as well, the numbers are, are less and far less than the numbers I was, I was hearing, but I'm, I guess my question is, um, do we normally do a traffic safety study when it comes to, uh, developments like this? And if so, uh, did we do one for this one?
Thank you for your question councillor, it's just transportation engineer again. Um, it really depends on the application and sort of the neighborhood context. Um, a specific separate traffic safety assessment wasn't conducted for this particular site, like our review would consider the scale and potential impact of this development, but we wouldn't have necessarily, we don't always look at, you know, collision history. Um, but I will note that that is something that we are looking at through the Forty-Ninth Street assessment that I, I mentioned previously.
Okay, thank you. Um, my other question is around school capacity, I didn't see anything in the report around, uh, school capacity, I'm wondering if staff have any idea, uh, Maple Grove School and McGee High School, what their capacities are and.
So we know that, um, uh, Maple Grove Elementary is currently above capacity right now, we, um, received the Vancouver School Board's long-range facility plans. Um, enrollment is expected to decrease, um, until about 2030, so it is on a declining trend, but it's still at capacity at that stage. Um, we, we have noted that Carisdale Elementary, which is within, uh, two kilometers, is currently under capacity and is expected to decrease. Uh, Maggie Secondary is at about seventy-five or seventy-seven percent capacity right now and that's expected to decline to about seventy-five percent, uh, in 2030.
Okay, thank you. Those are my questions chair.
Thank you very much councillor, moving on to councillor Meisner.
Thanks chair Klassen, um, we heard a couple times today, um, about this particular stretch of road being more narrow than other arterial roads. Uh, just wondering, uh, from engineering if that is in fact true, if we, uh, did a comparison with other similar roads where other SRP projects have been approved.
Thank you for your question. Uh, this roadway, the, the technical, um, I guess right-of-way width from property to the property line here is currently sixty-six feet. As I mentioned earlier, we are taking a seven-foot dedication for the building line that will widen that public right-of-way to seventy-three feet. There is a long-term plan, um, to achieve an eighty-foot right-of-way here that's similar to other, um, arterials. Uh, that said, the actual like curb-to-curb, so that's kind of the paved surface is not dissimilar to other arterial, arterials, pardon me, across the city. So what we're seeing here is, we've heard, you know, one lane in each direction, um, you know, we've got one lane in each direction and parking on both sides. Um, and that's really similar to, as an example, I would say sections of Twelfth Avenue where we've got kind of the two lanes, one lane in each direction, parking one, on both sides and then similar build form, um, adjacent to it.
Okay, so it's not, it's not smaller than other comparable, similar roads around the city is what you're saying, it's like a standard size?
Yeah, it's fairly standard.
Okay, uh, thanks for, uh, confirming that. Hearing from the gallery that that's incorrect, but, uh, I will, uh, check into that. We'll just, we'll just, uh, we'll just have to keep going with the questions, but.
All right, you're not allowed to, um.
Yeah.
Address council that way, thank you.
Okay, uh, no worries. So next question is, uh, tenant protections. Uh, one of the callers, uh, referenced that, um, one of the existing single-family homes on the site had a large number of students living in it and I just want to confirm that, uh, tenant protections, relocation, et cetera, policy applies here and that it has been extended.
The, uh, tenant relocation protection plan does apply here, but I will pass it to my colleague Ty in housing to give some more details.
After many, my name's Ty, I'm with housing. And yes, the tenant relocation and protection policy applies here. We're aware there are eligible tenants on site and as we move through the process, if others become, um, known, we will work through and determine their eligibility as well. Thank you.
Okay, uh, glad that you were able to confirm that, thank you. That's it for my questions, thanks chair.
Thank you councillor, okay. Uh, clerk, did we receive any additional comments?
Thank you chair, um, no, all the comments that have been received have been circulated to council.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, council, now make a decision on this application. Uh, do we have a mover for the recommendation? Councillor Meisner move secondary?
Councillor Boyle.
Uh, councillor Joe second, thank you.
Yep.
All right, okay, it's been moved by councillor. Okay, it's been moved by Counselor Meisner and seconded by Counselor Joe. Is there any debate? Counselor Boyle.
Thanks, I'll be, be brief, but just to say, as many know, I grew up in this neighborhood, and so I'm very familiar with, with those nearby streets and the housing challenges, as well as, as we heard from a number of people, the wide diversity of housing that already exists in the neighborhood, the apartment buildings closer up by 41st and really surrounding the area. And I can say from my personal experience, I know a lot of young people, or used to be young people, who grew up in the neighborhood and weren't able to find housing choices, both that were available and that they could afford to stay in the neighborhood that they were raised in and to raise children of their own near-grandparents, or just to continue to call the community that they grew up in home. So I am happy to see housing, these 140 homes being proposed in the neighborhood and am supportive of them being built. I also wanted to name, I appreciate the, hearing the concerns about road safety and that those predate this building. Hopefully, having more people living within walking distance of shops and homes, shops and services means more people can walk or roll and are less reliant on vehicles for every trip, and that the transportation improvements that are included in the project really benefit the whole neighborhood. But overall, a lot of addressing those types of transportation concerns means building more complete communities where people can walk and roll closely, and projects like this are an important piece of that and an important piece of our climate work for those same reasons. So very happy to see more homes being built in a neighborhood I know and love very well and where I know a lot of people want to live or want to continue to call home as they, as they age. Thanks.
Right. Thank you, Counselor Boyle. Counselor Carr?
Yeah, I also will be supporting. And I really appreciate that that's staff are going to be concerned that were raised by the public around the transportation. Okay, thank you, staff, again. I really appreciate the fact that, that you acknowledged the concerns of the public around road safety and traffic safety and that, that you're going to be paying attention to that in terms of pursuing better safety measures, some of which are in the report, some of which I think you're going to pursue, just to ensure that there are not the accident rate that, that some of the speakers attended to. I just want to speak very briefly around the fact that this, you know, change in a city is, is often tough for many people. And I want to remark that Ravi Kalam, BC's Minister of Housing, recently said something around change that I thought was very insightful. And, and he said that neighborhoods have, neighborhoods, specifically single-family neighborhoods, have already changed. And I hate to say this, but when I first got married, you know, my husband and I were able to buy a single-family home, three-bedroom home with a three-bedroom basement suite in Kipserlina for under $100,000. That's not possible. That is not possible. We know that. So there is change. Those neighborhoods that people have grown up in 30, 40 years, they were able to access it probably not being multimillionaires. Now you have to be a multimillionaire to buy a single-family home. That means that that neighborhood and any neighborhood which is not allowing the people who currently live there were able to access at the time they bought, that's just, that's the change. And so we need to recognize that, that if we want to create a city that has the opportunity for people who are wanting to live in this city can have a choice in the range of neighborhoods throughout the city, we have to change what kind of housing is available that they now can afford. And that's what the Vancouver Plan is about. It's about creating opportunity for people to choose a neighborhood and know that they can do that because there is affordable housing in that neighborhood that is currently not there, and that's why certain neighborhoods are emptying out in terms of decreasing the population, as in this neighborhood, and seeing enrollments decline in some schools because of, again, the kind of people who are able to live in that neighborhood either by luck because they've been there for many decades or because they have sufficient income. So I want an equitable city. When we, when we engaged people on the Vancouver Plan, that is what the people in the city, the thousands of people, over 20,000 touchpoints said, they wanted to. An equitable city where they could access, you know, a neighborhood and find housing, find the amenities, live close to where they could go to school, where they could have other community amenities, where they could shop. And, and that's, I think, what this is helping accomplish. So remember, your neighborhood in Carisdale has changed, and it's not as accessible as it was historically. Let's make it accessible again.
Thank you, Counselor Carr. Counselor Meisner?
Yeah, thanks, Chair. I think my colleagues have done a great job of articulating the need for this type of housing throughout the city. I was speaking with a rental developer this morning. It's one of the biggest rental developers in the city, and they recently opened a new rental building at Hastings and Renfrew on the east side. They had 75 units for rent. They had 3,000 applications. They had so many applications that they picked the best 300, and they did a lottery. So that shows you the demand for rental. And obviously, this location, I think, is, you know, a less busy street in an area with more tree coverage and parks and amenities than being right on Hastings. So I think we need to give opportunities for prospective renters to live all over the city. It's also a location that I think is well-served by neighborhood amenities that will get people out of their cars. So there's been some concerns raised about traffic and congestion and that sort of thing. In my experience, I've lived in multifamily housing for 20 years. People that live in condos in these types of areas are probably less, or apartments are less likely to drive. They're going to want to walk to the grocery store, they're going to want to walk to the neighborhood shopping street. We have Save On Foods at 49th and Arbuthnot, not too far away from this, this building. So I am, you know, anticipating many people that will be lucky enough to live in this building would be walking there. So I think that that will help mitigate some of the concerns about putting tons of additional vehicles onto the road with this density. We also heard that the population of the neighborhood has been declining, and in a city that's growing as fast as Vancouver with such a strong need for additional housing, that to me says that the status quo isn't working, and we do need to introduce other options for people to live in these neighborhoods. And a lot of children, teens, young adults that grew up in this neighborhood would not be able to afford to live in the neighborhood without these kinds of options. I myself can't afford to live in this neighborhood, and, and that's fine, but we need to give people options. And, you know, if this building was to, to be approved, then I would be able to potentially afford to live in this neighborhood, and we could have young couples and, and singles living in the neighborhood, the teachers, the firefighters, people in our community that are essential. So I'm supportive of the project and hoping it's approved.
Thank you very much, Counselor Meisner. Counselor Dominado?
Thank you, Chair. And thank you to the staff and applicant for the presentations, and thank you to all the residents who came and spoke today, who are in person, but also those who called in today. I think much of key points have been covered. I just want to reflect, I do appreciate the different considerations that are being raised. There are obviously a number of residents called in and, and spoke in favor of this proposal, and then others have not. And I think, you know, Counselor Carr really hit the nail on the head in terms of change and what that means for people and how we respond to that and, and changing neighborhoods. And I'm thinking, even just reflecting on the neighborhood I'm living in right now and just in the 12, 13 years I've lived there, it's, it's changing and going to continue to change, both from a development standpoint, but also in terms of public transit and other issues. And so appreciating that, and also that the considerations raised around traffic safety, pedestrian safety, staff have duly noted, I think, the feedback there and concerns and considerations. I just want to reflect, just given that this is a rental project, the, we know that our vacancy rate is incredibly low in the city of Vancouver, and that plays a role in the cost of housing. And so we need to add rental, and this is a modest project of five stories. I also want to note one of the headlines that we had last week, for those who are aspiring to homeownership and recognizing that's not necessarily everyone's aspiration, but it said, "It takes four decades to save house down payment in Vancouver." Four decades. And, and so to Counselor Carr's point earlier about, you know, her ability, her family to, to purchase a home, we're living in a very different landscape today in terms of affordability. What I think is worth noting is that not only does this give families a foothold into housing in the city, but also we heard over the last number of years how residents who are living in the neighborhood, who are wanting to downsize, that there's not many options if you're wanting to downsize and stay in the neighborhood where you've maybe raised your own family and you want to stay there. So this provides an option for that. But also, one of the other key issues we hear often is about concerns over displacement and, and the, the challenges and issues related to taking down three, four-story walk-up rentals. And so in this case, there's very little limited displacement in a, in a, in this context. And so I think it's worth noting. And so from that perspective, I'm prepared to support this application. I think it's a good one. But again, recognizing there are diverse perspectives on this issue and being sensitive to that, but I'm going to support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I'm going to see the chair to make a few remarks. Counselor Meisner, we'll see the chair to you. Thank you very much. I just want to also just, you know, make a few remarks. I want to thank again all the speakers that came in today and, and came in on the phone line and the people who took time out of their day today to talk about this. And I really, as somebody who's, has got some familiarity with the neighborhood, he was an eastside kid, but I had some friends who went to McGee and used to spend some time here when I was younger. I also, this was a, a neighborhood that I lived in for many years as a renter and as well as a UBC student. It was part of my way to, to get out to campus. So I understand what some of the traffic concerns might be around 49th, and it certainly sounds like staff are trying to mitigate some of those. There was some discussion around cycling from a couple of speakers as well, concerns about safety for cycling, particularly the ability to move north, south through the community and through the neighborhood. So I hope that those kinds of things are factored into the future. I know that having been down there on my bike, it's an absolutely beautiful place to, to ride around there, but you want to make sure that you're not competing for space with, with, with drivers. But I do think that ultimately what we will be seeing here is this, I think, very modest shift in, in the, in the typology of the neighborhood will allow the opportunity for those, those small businesses and offices that are along West Boulevard and in, and on 41st Avenue to benefit from having new people in the neighborhood. And even though the, this is market housing, I know that people in this community here, certainly seniors, will be looking for options for where they might want to live if they want to downsize, not to have as much space around them and, but still be able to maintain strong connections to the community, family, and friends. So from that standpoint, I feel like this is a, a project that I can support, and so I will be voting in favor of it as well. So with that, I will take the chair back from you, Counselor Meisner. All right. All right, now I am going to, now that debate has ended, I am going to call the vote, but before I do that, just remind that any council member participating virtually whose video is disabled, it will be marked absent for the vote pursuant to Section 1413 of the procedure bylaw. I do believe, I see our two counselors on the line, actually, three are on the camera, so that's great stuff. So I'm now going to call the vote. Clerk, can you please take us to the voting screen?
A bit of privilege, Chair.
Very good. Counselor Kirby Young?
Yeah, just confirming I am on the line, but I wasn't able to listen to the full debate because I dialed in late due to civic business, so I believe that precludes me from voting because you need to have heard all the speakers.
Very good. Okay, thank you very much. We'll, I think you is abstaining.
That's not correct, actually. I think it precludes me from being recorded as voting at all. I just want to be clear about...
Not voting at all, not voting, okay. All right, Clerk, so... I don't know how I vote here on this panel. All right, it's me that's holding things up here. I just need to try and find... Okay. Clerk, can you just make sure you vote me in favor as well? I don't, I can't see how to do it on this panel. Perfect. Great, okay, that's the way to do it. All right, with that, yeah, go ahead. And, all right, we, the motion passes with all unanimously. Okay. Thanks very much, everybody. We'll move on to the next item. Rezoning 38033823 West Hen...
Hi, Casio, can you hear me? Yeah, thank you.
All right, so again, we're speaking to item number two, rezoning 3803 to 3823 West 10th Avenue. Does any member of council wish to declare a conflict of interest on item two? Okay. Hearing none? Clerk will now read the application and the summary of correspondence received.
This is an application by Sightline Properties to rezone 3803 to 3823 West 10th Avenue from residential district to residential rental district to permit the development of a six-story mixed-use market rental building with commercial retail at grade 20% of residential floor area will be secured as below-market rental units. Height is 72 feet and a floor space ratio of 3.5 are proposed. The General Manager of Planning, Urban Design, and Sustainability recommends approval subject to conditions set out in the summary and recommendations. The following correspondence has been received since referral to the public hearing. Forty-one pieces of correspondence in support, eight pieces of correspondence in opposition, and three pieces of correspondence dealing with other aspects of the application. This represents all correspondence received up to 12:00 PM today.
All right, thank you, Clerk. This is a first call for speakers. Any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 1061445 pound. Before the close of the speakers list, phone number will be tweeted out and made available on the live stream. Any speakers in the council chamber, please come forward to the podium before the close of the speaker list. There will be an opportunity for new speakers and missed speakers to be added at the end of the registered speakers list. We have staff from Planning, Urban Design, and Sustainability here to present the application. Staff, please go ahead.
Good afternoon, Deputy Mayor, Council, and members of the public. My name is Sarah Cranston. I'm the rezoning planner for this application, which is being considered under the secured rental policy. The Secured Rental Policy, or SRP, encourages construction of new purpose-built rental housing in Vancouver. The policy aligns with the rental housing goals of the Housing Vancouver Strategy and the complete neighborhood goals of the Vancouver Plan. Updates to the SRP were approved by council in 2021 to create residential rental zones, also known as RR zones or district schedules. Council also approved a map which designates eligible areas for the standardized RR zones. Rezonings to RR districts have a simplified rezoning process. Instead of site-specific CD1 zones, the RR district schedules have standardized permitted uses, densities, and heights to provide certainty about the building forms permitted in low-density areas. The RR districts are accompanied by design guidelines, which were also approved by council. In the simplified process, architectural drawings are not required at the rezoning stage. Building design would be reviewed through a future development permit process, at which time the neighborhood would again be notified to provide their input. This map from the Secured Rental Policy shows sites that are zoned RS or RT outside of community plan areas, thus are eligible for rezoning under the SRP. The sites eligible for rezoning are based on close proximity to public transit and local shopping, as well as being located on the first full block of an eligible arterial road. The purple star indicates the site of this application, located on 10th Avenue, one block west of Alma Street. Shown in blue are the blocks around the site that are also eligible for a rezoning to an RR district. The eligible RR zone options for this site are shown on the screen. For the subject application, the applicants are proposing a RR3B zone, which requires commercial units at grade and 20% of the residential floor area to be below-market units. Outlined in yellow, the subject site is zoned RS1 and comprised of three detached homes.
Getting a moment here to get our presentation up on the screen again. Go.
Is the WebEx still active in the public meeting?
I think the WebEx is still active.
Okay. Just one second. I'm in it? Okay. Sorry about that.
Let me get the.
You okay? Okay.
All right, carry on. Thank you very much.
I'll start again on this slide.
So outlined in yellow, the subject site is zoned RS1 and comprised of three detached homes. At present, there is one tenant eligible for renter protections. The site is surrounded by similar RS-zoned residential properties. Consistent with the intent of the SRP, the site is located adjacent to a neighborhood shopping area, which is shown in red. Of note in this neighborhood is the site outlined in blue at the northwest corner of Broadway and Alma Street. This site is currently being developed as a 14-story secured rental building, which includes 20% moderate-income units and commercial at grade. The site shown in red is located near several parks and schools. The site is well-served by frequent transit, with bus stops for the 99B line located a block away from the site. The intersection of Broadway and Alma Street northwest of the site has been identified as a potential station location for the Skytrain extension to UBC. The proposed RR3B zone allows for a six-story mixed-use rental building with 20% of the residential floor area as below-market rental units. Because the subject property is a corner site, a density of 3.5 FSR is permitted, including a minimum 0.35 FSR as commercial uses on the ground floor. The Housing Vancouver Strategy seeks to deliver a range of tenures and affordability across the housing continuum. Shown in green to the right are the typical market rents for newer buildings on the west side of Vancouver. And shown in blue to the left are the below-market rents as secured by the SRP. Below-market rents must be 20% less than the average citywide rents, as published by CMHC. The process for seeking public input on RR rezonings is the same as for CD1 rezonings. For this application, an open house was held May and June of last year, and 84 pieces of correspondence were received. Support was given for the overall increase in rental housing and the inclusion of below-market rental units, as well as ongoing neighborhood revitalization. Concerns were expressed regarding the fit of the proposed development within the existing low-density neighborhood and potential negative impacts to traffic safety and congestion. In response to concerns, staff will note that the proposed height and density is consistent with the Secured Rental Policy and the RR3B district schedule. The proposed form of development will be reviewed at a later development permit stage. In response to concerns of parking and traffic safety, staff note that the proposal will be required to comply with the parking bylaw or the provision of parking spaces at the time of development permit. Rezoning conditions have been written to deliver improvements to address traffic and road safety, including upgrades to traffic and pedestrian signals at 10th Avenue and Highbury Street. The public benefits accruing from this application are the secured market housing units, including below-market rental units. There is also a DCL contribution of approximately $850,000 as the applicant has chosen to pursue the DCL waiver applicable to the residential portion of the building. No CAC contribution is due as the CAC policy for rezonings exempts routine, low-density, secured-market rental rezoning applications. In conclusion, this proposal meets the intent of city policy by delivering a secured rental mixed-use building with 20% of the units below-market rate. Staff support this application to rezone to the RR3B district schedule with the form of development reviewed through the development permit process. Staff and the applicant team are available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, is the applicant team here to speak to the application?
Yes.
All right, you have the floor.
All right, thanks Deputy Mayor Clausen and the rest of council. My name is Jamie Vaughn. I'm the president of Sightline Properties. I'll keep it brief. I have nothing really to say. I'm here to obviously answer any questions, but I just would like to highlight the fact that this proposal basically consists of everything the city really needs right now. Not only market rental, but affordable rental and retail as well. So we're excited about the project, and we think it really fits into the neighborhood, as was discussed by Sarah. So yeah, here to answer any questions you guys may have.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, are there any questions from council to staff or the applicant team? Noting this is the only opportunity for council to ask questions of the applicant. See Counselor Kirby Young.
Yeah, thank you, and thanks for the overview. I wonder if you can go back to the slide that shows the difference between the below-market rents and the average west-side rents? So I just want to ask a question to clarify because I don't think this point is often well-understood. Wait till you have that there. But maybe I can preface the question that the 20% below-market is, if you look at those numbers, is citywide and not necessarily below the west-side rents. So am I correct that therefore the savings in a west-side area is much greater, for example, than if this building was on the east side? Because it's a discount from citywide rents? Because if you look at that first example, and I'm not sure if you can bring up the slide. It'd be helpful.
I believe I'm sharing the screen. But I'm going to turn this over to my colleague in housing.
Yeah. My time is ticking, so maybe we can see if that is possible to bring that up?
While that's getting pulled up, I can start to address the question. You're correct, Counselor. So the requirement for the below-market rents is based on the citywide average market rent, as reported by CMHC. So it's not specific to the west side, and it's not actually even specific to newer rental buildings. It's reflective of the overall average rent citywide. So certainly it does represent a greater depth of discount when you consider the average market rents amongst newer buildings on the west side.
So the savings is quite significantly higher, and mine is not loading either. I just really want to... There it is. So somebody's actually literally saving a third, for example, on a studio, as opposed to the required 20% in this particular situation, based on geography? Or they're saving, what is that, almost 40% over on in one bedroom?
That's correct.
Okay. So the 20% inclusionary or affordable component makes a huge difference in terms of affordability?
Absolutely, it does.
Okay. And can you just refresh for council quickly? Who has access and how people are able to apply for those units? And if you want to direct that question to the applicant, whoever's best to answer, that's fine, too.
Yeah, absolutely. So once the project is completed and leasing up, it will be the responsibility of the applicant or the current owner or property manager to find and verify eligibility of tenants for those below-market units. The city doesn't have an active role in participating in that, but we certainly would be a conduit to provide information on buildings that include below-market units.
Okay, and eligibility is defined or based upon?
It's based on two factors. So income of the tenants as a function of the rent for the unit and household size.
Okay, so do we know what the proportion is in terms of rent that we're responding to? Is it no more than 30% of?
The maximum income for a prospective applicant for a below-market unit is actually a maximum income, and it relates to a calculation that's based on the rent for the unit they are interested in renting. And their income may not be more than four times higher than the annualized rent for the unit.
Can I ask the question a different way? Can somebody earning $30,000, $50,000, $70,000 afford these units? Who are they targeted at?
The range of incomes, based on the current average market rents, ranges up to about $100,000 a year, from about $40,000 a year for the smaller studio units at this time.
Okay, that's a really helpful perspective. I'll leave it there. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor. Okay, so now we will hear from the public, and I'm going to refer to the speakers list now. Sure if this first person on is on the line, because I overheard her say that she was speaking to another item, but I'm going to read out the name here. Kristy Mattis is supposed to be on. Kristi Mattis is supposed to be on the phone. Okay. I'm going to go to the next person. Craig Roberts. Great, you're here in the chamber. Thanks very much. Come, you will have five minutes.
Thank you Chair Claussen and councillors. Thanks for the opportunity to provide some input regarding the rezoning amendment for 3803 to 3823 West 10th Avenue. I live one block from this location, like right in line with it, with my young daughters. And like you, I'm acutely aware of the pressing need to increase housing supply in Vancouver, particularly for families. I was going to make a complaint about no renderings or drawings, but I thank you for clarifying. That's actually not needed at this point, so you'll probably hear from me again. So maybe Jamie, this is for you. Also, without question, a three or four-story building would fit much better at this specific location, which is set at a higher elevation than its commercial and mixed-use neighbors to the east and northeast. But that said, I believe that the approval for the zoning bylaw amendment for a six-story mixed-use rental building with a floor-space ratio of 3.5 is a foregone conclusion in this case. So, in the spirit of progress, inclusion in a vibrant community, for the long term, I share some recommendations to help ensure the successful integration of this new building into our neighborhood. Number one, I have three points. First point is integration with West 10th and the Highbury Street level at the corner. The new building can and should integrate in harmony with the streetscape of West 10th, which is really busy, and Highbury, which is much less busy. A good example of this, and some of you may be familiar, is West Broadway and Vine, where there's community input in that one. This was a number of years ago. It led to a softened corner and enhanced pedestrian experience with commercial activity. We can implement a similar feature at this corner. We should. Elements such as a curved setback corner entrance, portico, lower-level overhang, sidewalk, trees, planters, pedestrian seating, benches, even a fountain. These will collectively or can collectively create a better pleasing commercial level and entrance that reduces traffic noise and attracts both renters and commercial tenants, not to mention shoppers and patrons. Keep in mind also, please, that this corner acts as the gateway to the future Jericho Lands mini-city, which is right there. It's going to be right in that location or very close. And this area, especially in Highbury, will experience significant traffic and usage for generations and generations to come. It's of the utmost importance to get the design right in this case. And here's an idea, I came up with this last night. Eventually, make Highbury pedestrian and bike only from 10th to 4th, like the pilot in Kits at York right now. This would be a lasting legacy and aligns perfectly with the east border of the future Jericho Lands. Seriously, this boulevard should be walking and biking only at some point. Alma, 10th and 4th are great for vehicle channels. And by the way, I mention this as a person who basically drives down Highbury almost every day. So please keep that in mind. Different vote, I guess. But in the big picture, it makes sense. Second point, rezone, in this case, contingent on a well-designed building and architecture. Does that mean? The proposed building occupies a very important location that connects Point Gray, Dunbar and Kits. To truly benefit the neighborhood over the long term with a long-term view, it's important to prioritize design that is thoughtful and also contributes beyond just utility. Good examples are the iron and white apartments up the hill from this location on 10th. I know many of you know the nearby Parthenon apartments and mixed-use buildings on West Broadway. It's been mentioned many times in council. West Bank's very carefully designed 14-story landmark tower on Alma, which I did speak to and is a stone's throw from here. And the upcoming Raphael Building on 10th and Alma, which is just down the street from here. So taking inspiration from the existing architectural character of the block, notably the storefronts across the street, including Little Kitchen, the Pokemon, these are businesses, small business skates, folk art interiors and forecasts, the new building has the potential to stand out very positively, enhancing the neighborhood's charm. I think a generic or unremarkable building is a big, fat, wasted opportunity in this case. Third and final point, and I think this has already been mentioned, but provides sufficient underground parking. Addressing the existing concerns regarding parking availability in the area, it is vital to include ample underground parking to accommodate both retail business visitors and, more importantly, the renters. This proactive measure will alleviate potential frustrations for residents and taxpayers and facilitate a smoother transition for the community. It's worth noting that, and I know this was kind of mentioned in one of the comments, but it's worth noting that an underground parking entrance can be accommodated in this back alley. There's one actually right across the street from Highbury, there's already one there. So in closing, I'd also like to kindly request the implementation of permit parking on Highbury Street extending two blocks up and down. This measure is necessary to preserve the existing residential parking spaces and maintain essential utility for the people who live there. Families right now rely heavily on these spaces along Highbury for parking, loading, unloading activities, including children, groceries, elderly residents. Considering the high-density nature of this six-story building in the area, the city should reasonably expect vehicle parking here, particularly as the transition to electric vehicles continues. Please keep in mind, it's going to be some time before the subway is installed, you know, within a block or two from here, so. So with the massive influx of new housing units expected on the west side of Vancouver...
You've gone overtime, my apologies, I was following the clock as closely as I...
Sorry, that's it.
You've made some good points, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Very good, we're going to move on to the next speaker. And that person is Craig Osthausen. Thanks very much, you have five minutes.
Good afternoon. Chair Claussen and council, it's a pleasure to be here to voice my opposition. I have sympathy for the rental crisis, but I also have a newfound appreciation for what you deal with every day, so I appreciate the time. I'm a first-time caller and a first-time listener to this, so I have no experience to this. So I do want to make two quick points. One is around the topography of this specific area and the second thing is around the financial impact for the immediate neighbors. First of all, the topography, if you go along West 10th, right at Highbury, the street goes a lot steeper. That's the area where the buses normally get stuck in snow. So what is proposed is a six-story building. Most of the buildings around this area, the current area to the east of this street, are all three-story mostly. My point is that a six-story building will appear more like a seven or eight-story building because the block is a lot higher and there's a very steep incline. So I think council need to be aware that that is a unique topography element in this area. So if this was a three- or four-story application, I would probably not be here since it's a six-story application and it's going to appear like a seven or eight-story, I'm here. The fact that that is now going to impact, that's my second point, the financial impact to the immediate neighbors, especially to the south. I moved to this area a few years ago, I decided to pay a premium for my house just because I wanted the view. So there's about 12 homes, I counted, that will be directly impacted by this house. I can see the city, I can see the mountains. If I add the 24 meters that this will add to that specific area, I will have an impact to my view and my house will decline in value. And so is my neighbors. I just happened to see this flyer two, three days ago, my wife said, can I throw this out? I checked with my one neighbor, nobody's seen a flyer or actually paid attention. That's not your fault, but I think I just happened to stumble across this three days ago. So I think if the neighbors down the street, the 12 homes or so, know what this is all about and realize that their values will go down, I think they will all be here today. So that's the two points that I want to make, thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Okay. We have one more speaker on the phone here, Matthew Schmidt.
Hi.
Hi there, sir, you please go ahead. You have five minutes.
I give my thanks to the mayor and the council for my chance to speak. My name is Matthew. I represent myself. I speak in favor of the proposal. I'm a resident of Vancouver and rent in the Ferby area. I grew up on the west side of Vancouver and I've lived on the west side of Vancouver for the majority of my life. I think new mid-sized apartment buildings are great for the west side of Vancouver. The site is an excellent choice, West 10th Avenue and Highbury. Going east is currently developed for commercial and apartments. The proposal just extends up a block. I think the proposed building will bring in new businesses to the neighborhood and will provide well- meeting housing, well-needed housing, sorry, to the west side of the city. The site will be just two blocks from the new subway station, allowing access to people who do not drive and students commuting to and from UBC. The major bus route, the B-line, is just a block away with a stop at Alma and Broadway. The proposal makes perfect sense to the neighborhood and to the city. That is all I have to say. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Okay. I'm just going to see, so I'm going to now, this is the second call for speakers. If there are any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610 followed by participant code 1061445Pound before the close of the speakers list. The phone number will be tweeted out and made available on the live stream. Any speakers in the council chamber, please come forward to the podium before the close of the speakers list. Speakers will have five minutes to make their comments and should limit their comments to the merits of the report being considered. So clerk, are there any additional speakers on the line?
We are, we're just checking, we don't know for this item.
Right, we'll just pause for a moment. All right, so I'm going to call one more time for a third and final call for additional speakers. If there are any speakers for this item that wish to speak to council, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610. That's 1-833-353-8610 followed by participant code 1061445Pound before the close of the speakers list. The phone number will be tweeted out and made available on the live stream. Any speakers in the council chamber, please come forward to the podium. And we will take a five-minute recess while we wait to see if other speakers come on the line. Thank you. Are there any other speakers?
Yes, we're just getting ready here to be able to unmute and we do have more speakers.
Okay, very good, just let me know and I'll welcome them on.
I think we're ready now.
Okay, so speaker, can you please go ahead and identify yourself by name and whether you live in the city of Vancouver?
Hi, can you hear me?
Hi there, what's your name and do you live in this...
Hi, yeah. Yes, my name is Emile and I do...
Yes, my name is Emil and I do live in the city of Vancouver.
Emil, what's your last name?
Tim G.
Did you get that clear? Very good, okay. Very good, you've got five minutes.
Great, thank you. Uh, thank you very much for, uh, taking the time. Uh, I'm a resident in, uh, the neighborhood and I am in opposition of the proposed, uh, development. Um, uh, two points that I would like to, uh, bring up, uh, the first is the heavy traffic, uh, already, uh, in the area on the, uh, Highbury and, uh, 10th intersection. Uh, we have been witness to numerous accidents and have heard, uh, many more, uh, accidents that have occurred in the area due to the high volume or nature, uh, of that area. Um, and we've also, uh, heard, uh, or not heard, but seen, uh, many, uh, near misses, uh, in terms of potential accidents. Uh, so with this proposed development, uh, there's certainly going to be increased, uh, traffic to the area. As a result, uh, more potential, uh, accidents and, uh, and, uh, potential life-changing events. Uh, the second, uh, point I would like to make is that, uh, we already have a significant amount of development in the area. Uh, so as, uh, previously mentioned by, uh, by, uh, one of the, uh, other speakers, there is a development, uh, being put up by, uh, West Bank, uh, just, uh, stone's throw away, as well as there is one currently also being developed on, uh, the corner of Alma and 10th. Um, so we're increasing development significantly in this area without, uh, having seen the, um, how these developments impact the area to begin with. So I think we need to take a step back and take some time to let these existing developments, uh, be built, see how it impacts the area, and then we can make, uh, further changes, uh, that better suit, uh, the, the, uh, underlying community. Uh, and the third point I'd like to bring up is something that was already, uh, mentioned by one of the other speakers, uh, with respect to the topography of the area. Uh, so that, uh, that area of 10th Avenue is very, uh, steep in topography. Um, so even though it is a, it's a proposed, uh, six-story building, uh, it will indeed feel more like a seven or eight-story building. Um, if this was a proposed three or four-story building, that would, that's in line with, uh, the development on Alma and 10th, uh, for example, again, I would have no issues with this building and I would not be, uh, speaking, uh, at this, uh, at this hearing. But, uh, because it's a proposed six-story building, um, I do have an objection to it. Um, and, uh, that is all. Thank you very much for taking the time.
Thank you very much, speaker. Okay, uh, we'll go to the line again, see if we have another caller. Caller, can you please identify yourself and just indicate whether you live, uh, reside in the city of Vancouver?
Hello?
Hi there, just give us your name, please, and, uh, whether you live in the city of Vancouver.
Thank you. Um, my name is Mary Dick and yes, I live in, uh, West Point Gray. I've lived in West Point Gray my entire life and, um, I am opposed to the redevelopment application. I wouldn't be if it was a three or four-story development. It would be more consistent with the neighborhood. Um, number, the, um, main concerns I have, um, are safety. Um, I live about a block or two from the proposed development and the number of accidents that have been in that neighborhood in the last little while has, um, it's been about three or four and, uh, just in the last couple of months. So it is quite da- dangerous because of the topography and increasing, um, the number of people in that area would just make it, uh, more dangerous, particularly in the winter when, um, the roads are, uh, are icy. Um, another concern I have is the number of people moving into the area. There is the West Bank development, that's, um, 14 stories, another Ralph, uh, Raphael's, I think, development, just a block away, and the number of people that this area is, um, that are about to move in this area is a bit of a concern. Um, the services are already, uh, suffering, um, our garbage is not picked up on time, the amount of graffiti in the area has increased, the amount of garbage has increased, um, just on the streets. I go for walks at night and I'm not ashamed to say that I will pick up, um, trash on the side of the street because, um, just the whole area has gone downhill and I think the increase in the number of people in that area, um, is just gonna make it worse. Um, and, uh, yeah, like I said, I know development is important, but a three to four, um, story or, um, townhouses would be much more consistent with the neighborhood, um, and would increase development. I think, uh, having six stories would, um, just harm the, uh, aesthetics of the neighborhood and, uh, the, uh, safety, um, issue. Um, I also would like to point out that I am, uh, disappointed with the, um, upkeep of that development, um, in the, in the last couple of months. The, um, the boulevards and the lawns are completely overrun, there's trash all in the yard. Um, it's hard to believe that the developers actually care about the neighborhood, the residents, um, and, uh, they should, they need to do better if they want to, uh, make development, um, basically. That's all I have to say.
Okay. Thank you very much, caller. Thanks very much for, uh, giving your remarks. Okay, uh, just checking to see if we have somebody else on the line, clerk?
I'm just checking, Chair. No, there's no one else on the line.
Okay. Thanks very much. All right. And seeing there are no additional speakers, the speakers list is now closed and seeing there are, uh, few comments received afternoon, I'm now closing the receipt of public comments. Um, so the public will have, um, just one moment here. Okay, um, does the applicant have any closing comments?
Uh, at this point, we have no closing comments, other than, um, I think we've worked hard with our tenants over the last year to keep the place, uh, looking good. Um, it's sometimes hard to control tenants and their behaviors, but, you know, to the last speaker's comment on the cleanliness of the neighborhood, um, we, we've certainly had multiple conversations with tenants and certainly do care about the neighborhood and, and definitely try our best to keep it as clean as possible. Um, so I just want to make that very clear. Um, other than that, um, I have no further comments.
Thanks very much. Uh, do staff have any closing comments?
No further comments from staff.
All right, thank you very much. All right, council, any questions for, uh, for staff? Uh, councillor Kirby Young?
Yeah, two, two quick ones, and just in response to a couple of the comments we heard around, uh, concern with the height of the six-story building and the gradient, um, sort of on West 10th there, um, I wonder if you can speak to sort of any of the building designer considerations as to what that might actually feel like in terms of the gradient from the higher to the lower point and any considerations that have been made in the design, um, to adapt to the site or to be sensitive to the feel of the height on the adjacent neighbors?
Yes, thank you for your comments. Um, I will note that there is a slope on the site. Um, I will turn the question over to urban design in a moment, but will note that the RR3B district schedule, um, max, or it caps the density and the height, both at 22 meters or 72 feet. So, um, they would not be able to exceed those provisions.
Okay, but generally speaking, and, and I know that, um, in terms of the AR zones where there's not as much design specificity required at this stage, but generally speaking, when we have a site like that where we have a gradient, et cetera, I wonder if you can comment around what steps planning takes, um, in working with the applicant, uh, on designs to sort of be sensitive to that or address that?
I'm at Gassimi, uh, urban designer, development planner, PDS. Uh, thank you for the question, councillor Kirby Young. The massing is regulated by both height and density and, you know, when we have a flat site, there is going to be a six-story building and when it reaches the density and height, uh, the massing is formed. But when the site has a slope, then, uh, yes, when the site has a slope, there are going to be, you know, a blank wall situation at the lane or the flanking street, so there should be a play in the massing of the building, where a ma- massing from the top of the building should be removed to the bottom to address the lane or the flanking street. So overall, the massing may look like a seven-story, but the height, uh, is still the same. And in RR3 zones, the height is calculated from the front property line and it's, uh, extended or the backward horizontally, so the height is not going to change, but the number of stories may change.
Uh, maybe you could just clarify for me, I'm not sure if you intended to say that way, that it will look like seven stories with the massing, but the height candidacy, did you mean to say that it will, it will not feel like seven stories?
No, the massing is going to be like a six-story from West 10th Avenue, from the arterial, but even the site slopes down and goes to the lane and the flanking street, it may look like a seven-story from the lane.
From the lane specifically?
Correct.
Hi, Paul Chang, uh, senior development planner. I think, just to clarify, when you're standing up at the lane, there, the s- the building will be stepping down from the front of the site to the rear of the site, so it'll be six stories and then it steps down to become six stories again as seen from the lane because of the sloping nature of the site. So as a result, if you were standing at the lane, you would see a six-story height. If you're standing three blocks away, that's when this, the, the story that is higher up, that stepped up at the front of the site will become apparent, but you won't see it when you're close up to the building. It's-
Because of the stepping and the-
That's right, that's right. So, so the appearance of the seven stories can only be seen when you're far away from the site to the north and you're looking at it. And at that point, it doesn't really actually appear like a sev- like, it, it's not a very large building. I will also note that the zoning across the street to the east is C2, which also allows a similar type of building, a six-story building.
Across the street?
Yeah.
Okay, so wouldn't, would necessarily be out of context in this one specific location?
That's correct, councillor. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Kirby Young. I'll just have, uh, we haven't, uh, moved the motion yet, I just have a couple of, uh, questions with regards, I thought the, um, just again, speaking of the grade of the site and knowing the angle of the property and as well the traffic that does go through in Highbury, uh, especially when it's coming off of, uh, that Broadway turn, a lot of people use that. I'm just wondering if there is any, um, um, i- in the mid to longer term plans for addressing, uh, any kind of traffic calming in that block, uh, of Highbury between, uh, between, uh, 10th and 9th? Only just because, um, it, it, it was, as pointed out with the, the Jericho Lands development, there'll probably be a lot of people using that route and it might be better to kind of keep it on to the main thoroughfare, but I just thought it was an interesting observation. I'm wondering if staff was, would, had any comments about, uh, those ideas?
So we don't have engineering staff, um, to answer our questions about this item. Um, as part of the rezoning application being considered, engineering did complete their review and, uh, included conditions for upgrades at the intersection of 10th and Highbury for both pedestrian and traffic signals. Um, there are also, uh, conditions for widened sidewalks, both along, uh, Highbury and 10th Avenue, and, uh, lighting upgrades as well for that intersection. So I, I can't speak to the long-term plans, um, as it relates to-
Oh, but I can.
I see somebody behind you.
I can. Yes, we are working with engineering, we are looking at in-depth, in-depth traffic studies, uh, for the, for Jericho and the land surrounding Jericho. We're still waiting on some technical information from our applicants, but yes, that's a big concern for the immediate area, so we'll be looking into all that.
Very good, thanks very much. Thank you, staff. Okay. All right, so now, uh, I don't know if we've had any, uh, additional, um, comments before, since we've closed the public comments?
Uh, yes, council did receive written comments, um, back a little bit ago through your emails, plus it would have been published on the city's website.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, council will have to make a decision on this application. Do we have a mover for the recommendation? Uh, councillor Meisner and secondor, councillor Dominado? Okay, is there any debate? Let me see, councillor Meisner, that's you here, go ahead.
Great, uh, thanks Chair. Um, I think that, uh, this project is particularly, uh, a great project. Um, if you've been following the news, there's been, uh, some recent news coverage, uh, around the West 10th, Point Gray Village retail area and the challenges they've been having there with closed storefronts and vacancies and the need, uh, to inject new life into the area, so this is not, uh, too far from that. Um, it's on a, uh, street with excellent, uh, transit service and also close to the B-line and the, the forthcoming, um, future extension from our beautist to UBC of the Skytrain, uh, which means that this will be particularly, uh, well-connected, uh, location. Um, and, uh, it also has, um, the benefit of having 20% below-market rental. I was looking at the report, uh, included and the proposed, um, average starting rents are quite remarkable in terms of their affordability for new, um, supply on the west side. One bedroom of $1,303, two-bedroom of $1,800, uh, dollars, and a three-bedroom at around $24.50. So, um, those are the proposed starting rents for the below-market component and I know that there is just huge demand in that area. I used to work at UBC, uh, not just from staff at UBC, but students. Um, so I am wholeheartedly in support of this project. I think it, uh, ticks a lot of boxes and is a particularly good example of this policy working well.
Very good, thank you councillor. Okay, uh, now I'm going to call the vote. Uh, clerk, uh, can you please take us to the voting screen? Council, please register-
Unless more participants join, this conference will end in five minutes.
There you go, thank you. All right, council, please register your vote on the voting panel. Reminder to the coun- like anybody who is on the, on, online, uh, to turn on your, uh, your screen, um, so we can see you. Uh, I'm going to try, let me try this time, see if I can get it right. Okay, yeah, let's, let's, uh, see that. Okay, uh, it is unanimous with, uh, councillors, uh, Bligh and Mayor Sim absent. Thank you very much. Okay, so, um, we're going to move on to item three, which has one speaker and councillor Carr. One second, I'll advance you. Go ahead.
Uh, thank you, I'd like to move to extend this meeting past, uh, five in order to complete the business.
Okay, uh, great. Any discussion? All in favor? Say yay.
Yay.
Okay, very good. Um, uh, thank you councillor, um, I think, uh, we have, um, right now, we have one speaker for item three and we have three listed for item four, just giving you an idea of the possible time and we, um, so, uh, so we're going to move on to item three, which is CD1 rezoning 427449, West 39th Avenue. Councillor Carr?
Yes, thank you, I'd like to move to waive the staff presentation, given that we have, uh, one speaker. Um, for that, it's very few.
Okay, just one before, before we do that, I just need to read this one line here. Does any member of the council wish to declare cau- conflict of interest in item three? Okay, seeing none, all right, so we have a motion on the floor to waive the, uh, waive the presentation. Do I have a secondor? Councillor Kirby Young? Any discussion? All in favor? Say yay?
Yeah.
Very good, okay, thank you. So we will waive the presentation on this item from, uh, from staff and, uh, so this is our, um, sir, just going to read the, the, the summary, um, no, for the first item. The clerk will now read the application and the summary of correspondence received. Thank you.
This is an application by Gray Court Properties, three zone 427 to 449, West 40- 39th Avenue, apologies, from residential district to comprehensive development district to permit the development of an 18-story secured market rental building with 176 rental units, of which 20% of the residential floor area is secured at below-market rental units. A building height of 180 feet and a floor space ratio of 6.1 are proposed. The general manager of planning, urban design and sustainability recommends approval subject to conditions set out in the summary and recommendations. The following correspondence has been received since referral to the public hearing. Five pieces in correspondence in support, four pieces of correspondence in opposition and one piece of correspondence dealing with other aspects of the application. This represents all correspondence received up to 12 p.m. today.
Thank you. Uh, so this is the first call for speakers. Any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610. Any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 1061445 pound before the close of the speakers list. The phone number will be tweeted out and made available on the live stream. Any speakers in the council chamber, please come forward to the podium before the close of the speaker list. And I see we have one speaker and the speaker is, um, pacing in the hallway from what I can see. Nathan Davidovitz, uh, Nathan, are you able to come to the podium? Somebody want to let Nathan out in the hallway that he's, uh, thank you very much? Yep. Sorry, Counselor, let me just put your mic on.
Sorry. Just a procedure, um, were, there could have been a, maybe there should have been an opportunity to ask council if we could, wanted to ask questions?
Nathan, I'm just going to ask you to, um, just take a moment, uh, take, to pause. I'm just going to ask, uh, um, uh, is the applicant team here, uh, willing or wanting to speak to the application?
Good afternoon, my name is Adrian Rhabar, I'm a Vice President at Gray Court Properties. It's been a long afternoon, thank you, Acting Mayor, Council. I'd like to thank staff, Daniel Tean, uh, for all the work they've, uh, done to help advance and improve the project, or project team. We've got our architect, MCM, uh, PFS is here, landscape architect, and, uh, of course, our Development Manager, Nick Tennant, has done a great job. We're really thankful to, um, have this project for consideration this afternoon. We've been working together here for nearly two years and just wanted to take the opportunity to highlight a number of elements of this project we're really excited about. So, uh, as mentioned, 176, uh, rental units replacing three aging single-family homes. 34 below-market rental units includes, uh, three-bedroom units as well. 40% of the units are sized for families. There'll be a publicly accessible, um, mid-block, mid-block pedestrian connection. The building will be fully electric to help address, uh, our, our current climate challenges and, um, air conditioning to ensure that occupants, especially at-risk, uh, members of our community are, um, are able to, uh, live in comfort. So, um, just wanted to thank you again for the consideration.
Thank you very much. Okay, council, are there any questions from council to staff or the applicant team? Noting this is the only opportunity for council to ask questions of the applicant. Hey, I'm seeing nobody in the queue right now, so then I guess we will hear from the public now. Nathan Davidovitz, please come to the podium and we'll hear from you now. You have five minutes.
Thank you Chair and Councilmembers, and thank you Chair for your support of the various seniors, uh, positions. As you know, today's, June 15th is the annual World Elder Abuse Awareness Day and we thank you for your support. The, um, this particular item, uh, you know, myself and many other members from Oakridge and Langara residents, we spoke to council over the last four years about the bad access at the Oakridge 41st Canada Line station. And we, uh, you know, I, I would rather not keep coming each time a rezoning on the east side of Camby Street comes to city council because that's what the problem is, uh, uh, you know, uh, you know, you have to do the right things that previous councils and staff refused to do. You know, I sent you the example from Surrey where Surrey approved, uh, on May 15th, the east side access to the 152nd Street Station in addition to the west side access of, uh, of 152nd. And it's the same situation here. We have on the west side, the main entrance to the Oakridge, uh, station and then nothing on the east side, uh, except the emergency exit. And that emergency exit can be upgraded to a full entrance at, basically at a very little cost because they're just starting to build the new building at, uh, at the southeast corner of 41st and Camby. And, uh, I just can't see why the, the staff, uh, you know, are not following the staff of Surrey or what they do, you know? But, uh, I mean, this is not the only thing, that Surrey is better than Vancouver, you know? Look at traffic safety and Vision Zero and everything else. But, uh, you know, because there's just too many problems with the Oakridge station. You have to take three elevators, three, to get from the street level to the platform to go to downtown. This is not, you know, accessible, but, and, and not properly accessible. But, I mean, everybody knows about the problems with the Canada Line and it's not this council that made those decisions or, or staff even, the staff that were involved in that. They all retired or moved to somewhere else, you know? But, uh, you know, uh, we could do small things slowly and, uh, you know, improve the situ- the problems that we know there are on the Canada Line and, and something should be done. I mean, we can't rely on, 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 on BC Government, Ministry of Transportation or TransLink as they let us down on the many stations since 1985. Just read the report from CBC, from Justin McLaurin. He ranked all the Skytrain stations in, 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 in the lower mainland, you know? So there's many problems and we need to get independent advice if the staff here is not able to, to do what the staff in Surrey has done, you know? I mean, this is a, uh, a major station with 14 new high rises being built right now between now and 2030 on the Oakridge side. So we're going to have, uh, you know, so many people living within, uh, you know, two, three blocks of this particular station and it's just not possible to have all these people crossing at grade at 41st and Camby. Right now, there is over 5,000 people, I estimated, crossing there at grade. With all the developments going on, we're looking at, you know, uh, at more people crossing there than probably at Granville and Georgia. Because, you know, it's just a massive amount, number of people. And that's why we need the underground connection to the east side to, to, to help, you know? And, I mean, there was one UBC student that wrote a thesis about pedestrian overpass, but, you know, but I think the underground connection is the easiest one because we already have the emergency exit.
Nathan, I think you-
Thank you very much for listening to me and thank you for your support for seniors.
Very good, okay. All right, so this is the second call for speakers. If there are any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 1061445 pound before the close of the speakers list. The phone number will be tweeted out and made available on the live stream. Any speakers in the council chamber, please come forward to the podium before the close of the speakers list. Speakers will have five minutes to make their comments and should limit their comments to the merits of the report being considered. Right, Clerk, do we have any additional speakers on the line?
No.
Very good, okay. Right, so I'm going to make one more call, this is the third and final call. If there are any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 1061445 pound before the close of the speakers list. The phone number will be tweeted out and made available on the live stream. Any speakers in the council chamber, please come forward to the podium. Right, so, um, seeing no additional speak, uh, so we could take a recess or waive the recess? We have to take, take a recess? All right, we will take a short five-minute recess and- Okay. Okay, uh, Clerk, do we have any additional speakers?
No.
All right, very good. Seeing that there are no additional speakers, the speakers list is now closed and seeing that there are few comments received afternoon, I am now closing the receipt of public comments. All right, does the applicant have any closing comments? Oh, uh, does staff have any closing comments? Very good, thanks. Council, do you have any questions for staff before we move this? Nice. Very good. Okay, um, just before we do that, um, thank you, Counselor. Clerk, did we receive any additional comments since the close of public comments?
No, you have all the comments.
Very good, okay. I'll just advance you, Counselor Carr. So first of all, uh, Counselor, uh, so, uh, do I have a secondor for the, uh, Counselor Dominado? Okay, is there any debate, Counselor Carr?
Yeah, just want to be brief, I think this is a really great project. I'm really happy to see the, the rental and particularly the rental prices. I mean, they're really, they're very good, they're below-market. Units are, you know, like one, uh, 2,296 for a three-bedroom. I mean, that is affordable for many families. And, uh, 1,091 for a studio, 1,378 for a one-bed. This is, you know, in, in the heart of Vancouver and, um, and exceedingly, um, affordable and therefore accessible. It, it does create more equity within our city. And I was thrilled to hear 100% electric building, I mean, that is the wave of the future. So the more buildings that are like that, they set the precedent and the model. Others can look at it and say, that's working and, and, uh, and pick it up. So thank you for being on the vanguard of that.
Thank you, Counselor. I'll just, uh, um, I, I actually, I have to seat the Chair to make comments, so I'll seat the Chair, Counselor Meisner. Very simple comments, just thank you very much, great proposal, I concur with Counselor Carr and, uh, thanks very much staff for getting us to this point. So, uh, I will be supporting this, uh, this, um, this proposal. All right, um, I'm now going to call the vote. So Clerk, can you please take us to the voting screen? Council, please register your vote in the voting panel. A reminder to anybody who's online to turn their camera on, uh, pursuant to section 1413 of the procedure bylaw. Okay, has everybody voted? Very good. And, oops. There we go, unanimous vote with, uh, Councilors Bligh and Mayor Sim, uh, absent. Thanks very much, everybody. All right, now we're going to move on to the next item on the agenda, the Broadway Plan Implementation. Does any member of council wish to declare a conflict on, of interest on item four? Seeing none, uh, Clerk, uh, please now read the application and summary of correspondence received.
This is an application by the General Manager of Planning, Urban Design and Sustainability to Menzoning and Development Bylaw and Associated Guidelines. This is being done to support the implementa- implementation of the Broadway Plan and advance the directions of the city's Employment, Lands and Economy Review, Metro Vancouver Regional Industrial Land Strategy and the Regional Growth Strategy, Metro 2050. Following correspondence has been received since the referral to the public hearing. Three pieces of correspondence in support, no pieces of correspondence in opposition and two pieces of correspondence dealing with other aspects of the application. This represents all correspondence received up to 12:00 PM today.
Thank you very much, this is the first call for speakers. Any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 1061445 pound before the close of the speakers list. The phone number will be tweeted out and made available on the live stream. Any speakers in the council chamber, please come forward to the podium before the close of the speakers. Any speakers in the council chamber, please come forward to the podium before the close of the speaker list. There will be an opportunity for new speakers and missed speakers to be added at the end of the registered speakers list. Uh, we have uh staff from planning uh urban design and sustainability to present uh the application. Council, um, is there any decision as as to whether we would like to see the presentation? Okay, we have a motion on the floor to waive the presentation, seconded by councillor Monigou. Uh, all in favor, say yay?
Yay.
Very good, okay. Uh, thank you very much staff, we will, we will waive the the uh presentation, so um. Alright, uh, first of all, are there uh any questions from council to staff? Seeing none at this time, uh, we will now hear from the public. So uh I have a. Uh, Chair had a question. Alright, apologies. Councillor Meisner?
Yeah, thank you very much. Um, I understand that uh this this uh. I met these amendments put forward two pathways uh for development in the Mount Pleasant industrial area. Um, there's a one-third industrial option and a one-half industrial option. And one of those, the 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 fifty-fifty or the one-half requires rezoning still, is that correct?
That's correct, yeah. The the zoning amendments before you today are for the one-third option.
Okay, why are we um still uh requiring? Or what's the rationale for the the half and half still requiring the rezoning and the one-third not?
Yeah, so that's a great question, thanks. Uh, this is Chris Ma, Broadway Plan Team. Um, we, throughout the planning process, we did a lot of urban design testing and and a lot more kind of built form studies on the four-and-a-half FSR option. Uh, we're s- we we're doing the same with the the six FSR uh half industrial option as well. Um, so that would be something that we would uh look to to potentially bring back in the future. Um, we did wanna get the four-and-a-half FSR option in front of you today, just to get the projects moving. Um, I'd also just note that the six FSR option, uh, they're they're larger buildings and there are some more uh engineering considerations to take care of as well. Or to or to to be studied, so that that's another one of the one of the reasons.
Okay, so there's a chance that that um half option will be similarly treated in the future. That would come back to us?
We absolutely wanna move as much pre-zoning as we can, but we didn't want to um, to use one of the mayor's terms, let. Perfect be the enemy of good. These are ready, they're ready to go. There are a lot of applicants that are waiting for these, so we wanted to move these as quickly as possible.
Okay, and when we talked about engineering work or studies that need to happen, are you referring to infrastructure or is it more related to the building itself?
Uh, infrastructure, not not the building itself.
Okay, so the demands that that larger building would have on the area infrastructure?
That's correct.
Okay, okay, thanks very much.
Thank you councillor Meisner. Okay, uh, now we will hear from our speakers list. Um, here from the public, and a first registered speaker I have is Drew Allen Wesick uh in person, is Drew here. Thank you for your patience today, sir. You have five minutes.
Hello, um, thanks for having me. Uh, the last time I was in chambers, um. Stuart Kennedy was uh gracious enough to explain that he is standing firm with um. The right to um speak. Um, I've got a bit of a migraine, so please forgive me. Um, listening to all the speaking today, it's very apparent to me that. Safety in the streets is a really important factor. And this private citizen is here to address the elected public servants of the city of Vancouver. Being a democratic system grants me the rights of freedom of speech, thought and belief. Debate being one of the pillars of this constitutional paradigm. If we do not tolerate debate, we are undemocratic. I have here a signed list of residents from the Broadway corridor who I am representing. Um, that agree that some questions need to be answered. I've asked many of these people to attend online or on or in the gallery. Before I get to those questions, we the undersigned feel that our freedom. Of vehicular movement throughout the city are being hindered by the placement of concrete stanchions that restrict the healthy flow. Off of major arteries onto two res- onto two-way residential streets. I see a lot of frustration and anger building in the people by the difficulties being presented by the loss of safe mobility. Make no mistake, these are causing injuries to persons and vehicles. How is this making the city more livable? I could give you a list of these stress-inducing devices, but let's just take twelfth at Alder as a prime example. I myself experienced an eight-week recovery injury by the placement of these unwarranted safety hazards.
Pardon me, sir.
Off of the greenway onto Sixth Avenue.
Pardon me, sir. I just don't, I I were, just wanted to make sure that you were speaking to um to the the item itself.
I am uh, I am speaking about the item of uh developing in the city. And I am seeing to seeing a lack of concern for our safety during these developments. That's where I'm going with this. And all of these people have decided that the questions that I need to pose to the city are relevant to this situation. So. They were never, uh, I had a really bad accident and they were never there in the past four years that I've been cycling around that corner and checking for traffic off of the Sixth uh um. Sixth Avenue off of the greenway, checking over my traffic, tre- trekking over my shoulder. Very, very oblique angle and bang, I'm all over the road with a lot of pain for eight weeks to recover. These are some of the initiatives we've noticed uh that we are uncomfortable with. The people I am re- representing would ask that the current status of these and further initiatives be brought forward for consultation with the public and council. We hereby petition that these traffic infecting devices be removed as they play no role. In a sustainable future for free movement under the Charter of Freedoms and the Canadian Constitution and other accords, charters international and national. We feel these are indisputable signs of the future of restrictive smart cities. Now, are these, uh, are these plans for fifteen-minute cities? If yes, will there be consultation with the public about these initiatives? Question number two, uh, if no plans for consultation with the public, what authority do you have to create policies without the public and buy-ins? Question number three, will there or has there already been a vote with the councillors on this matter? Question number four, is this initiated, funded, sponsored by a foreign entity? Number five, is there any involvement of the W E F in developing or implementing fifteen-minute cities? Number six, will you be implementing travel restrictions like those mentioned in Oxfordshire, England? Setting allotments for how many kilometers one can travel in a month slash year with financial penalties penalties for not adhering to them? We, the private citizens, wish to be included in all discussions about future future mobility infrastructures with you. The public servants who are paid by us. It is your sworn duty to serve us, not the other way around.
Thank you, sir.
I have a list that I would like to pass on, and do you need the originals or do you need the copies?
Certainly uh provide it to the clerk and that will be circulated to council, but I appreciate.
Would you like the copies, the original or the copies? Thank you. And I also have these questions for all of the, oh, there's another, you got both of them. These are the questions that I posed before you today for each uh for the mayor and the council.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so our next speaker is Andrew Peterson. Nope, uh, not at this time, sir. This is just an opportu- this is just an opportunity to speak and present. Thank you very much, very good. Uh, and um, we have Andrew Peterson. Welcome, you have five minutes. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council and staff. Thank you for having me here today. We'd like, myself on behalf of PC Urban, I'm here today to express our support and for the forthcoming update to the zoning bylaw and district schedules specifically related to Mount Pleasant. And the Iowan zoning. The update to four-point-five FSR is a great step. Towards creating employment space and attracting employers to one of the most desirable neighborhoods within the city. PC Urban is a developer with deep roots in Mount Pleasant. We have developed the Nickel Project, which is home to Relic Entertainment, Rad Power Bikes and many others. And we have also developed the Lightworks Building, which is home to Sage Natural Wellness, Taco Fino and a list of many more. Lightworks was recently featured in the Broadway Plan as an example project for its design. As we understand it, neither of these projects would be possible today with the recommendations. On tower separation and maximum floor plate size. Currently, we are working through the design and approvals process on two other development sites in Mount Pleasant. One is located at the corner of Columbia Eighth and the other at the corner of Alberta and Sixth. For both of these proposals, we submitted letters of inquiry inquiry in early September and have had very positive dialogue with staff to date. We do wish to bring to council's attention some of the feedback we've received. Particularly related to two comments, which we believe to be contradictory to the stated goals of increasing the employment density within Mount Pleasant. The first is tower separation. The ask is to set back above sixty feet, and that has been requested on both projects. While this is possible to achieve on some sites, particularly much larger sites, it is not achievable on many. And will make realizing four-point-five FSR on a lot of the smaller sites, which is just within Mount Pleasant, not possible. It breaks up the floor plate and ensures that you have to have a center core, not an offset elevator core. Which unfortunately means you can, you reduce the size of the floor plates and the leasable space for the tenants that are looking for larger space. Which in our experience is what the tenants are looking for in Mount Pleasant, specifically in technology and biomedical sectors. The second item is the floor plates being restricted to under ten thousand square feet. We received commentary related to our project in Alberta and Six, which suggests the design be modified to incorporate this comment. We believe this change would negatively impact the project's ability to attract many of the tenants looking for space in the area today. Who are looking for larger floor plates, and similarly, we're seeing a lot of those users leave downtown where they have, they cannot achieve those larger floor plates. Recent projects, including Nickel, Lightworks and even Absellerah, all include floor plates in excess of ten thousand square feet. We also wanted to extend an open offer to mayors of staff, members of staff, council and mayor to come tour any of these projects or the or the area with us. We're very happy to arrange a tour and get inside those spaces for you. Again, I wanted to thank staff. There's a lot of positive work done here and there's a lot of posit- there's a lot of um, a lot to look forward to in Mount Pleasant. We're here to help and we stand by to help as we can. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much. Okay, we have another speaker on the list, Otto Ramet from Oxford Properties uh by phone.
Good, uh, can you hear me?
I can indeed. Do you have the floor? You have five minutes.
Good afternoon, Chair and councillors. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. Uh, as my name is Otto Ramhead, I'm a Director of Development at Oxford Properties Group. We're a Canadian-based global real estate investor and developer that owns and manages several significant commercial properties in the city of Vancouver. And uh have a proven track record of of award-winning commercial developments in the city. Uh, most recently with the the completion of the stack at eleven thirty-three Melville earlier this year. I'm joining the meeting today to to extend our thanks to staff, as well as reinforce concerns detailed in a letter that was submitted by my colleague. Uh, Andrew O'Neill prior to today's public hearing regarding the proposed water Broadway Plan implementation specifically related to the Mount Pleasant industrial area. In the referral report dated May ninth, city planning staff have proposed zoning amendments that include updates to the Iowan district schedule. Sport intensification in the Mount Pleasant industrial area by providing additional height and density for light industrial and employment uses, which we are fully supportive of. However, as currently drafted and and as just noted prior to this uh public speakers by councillor Meisner. The proposed amendments would pre-zone lands in the area to permit only the the one-third industrial options. Uh, while applications that meet requirements of the half-industrial option would continue to require a site-specific rezoning process. It's uh important to note that under the half-industrial option, the incremental density of of one-point-five FSR. Would consist entirely of the required and targeted industrial use. Yet those applications would continue to face a prolonged development approval process and uh create challenges in in attracting employers. Looking for light industrial space by delaying the delivery of new and suitable job spaces. We uh we recognize that the Broadway Plan is a thirty-year plan and that city sta- planning staff are are trying to take a measured and balanced approach to the implementation. However, as an active participant in the Vancouver real estate market, we're also intimately aware of the city's very low industrial vacancy rate. And the need to support the delivery of new industrial spaces. Through our regular interaction with industry employers that are actively seeking new space, it's clear that there's. The strong near-term demand for purpose-built facilities to support the growth of of innovative industries such as biotech research and development. We're we're even aware of employers that are planning to or are already spending significantly capital to convert. Existing buildings to accommodate their growth requirements due to a lack of of new purpose-built buildings. And candidly, if if these innovative growth industry are are unable to find the appropriate employment space locally. They will be pressed to expand geographically to to realize their internal growth projections and goals. Um. But by enabling both the one-third uh industrial option and the the half industrial option. Uh, as part of current amendments, uh, would have a significant positive impact on the creation of new spaces to support job growth. In the targeted innovation industries. And frankly, we don't see the the downside of ensuring that those development applications that do meet the required criteria. And align with long-term objectives of the Broadway Plan can be processed and delivered efficiently to meet meet the strong market demand. So when when considering the the proposed zoning amendments implement the Broadway Plan. We're encouraging council to to request that the Iowan district schedule be further amended to pre-zone. Both the one-third and the half industrial pathways for development in the Mount Pleasant industrial area. Uh, again, we appreciate the opportunity to speak to you today about this important matter, which supports job growth and and economic development within the city of Vancouver. So thank, thank you very much for your time and and happy to answer any further questions.
Thanks very much. Uh, you don't have any questions from council, so thank you for your uh time speaking. Uh, we're going to go to the phone line. I think we have one caller. Is Christine Mattis on the line?
Hi, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. You have five minutes.
Uh, thank you. Uh, good afternoon, council. I'm a Vancouver resident and I've been working for nearly two decades in commercial, in the commercial real estate industry. Um, well, I generally applaud the planning efforts here to streamline applications in the area. I support this amendment, but I have two quick key modifications or suggestions in order to. Ensure we are serving the future of these key employment zones. Um, number one, I noticed the definition of creative product manufacturing under section two use of the district schedule. The definition strikes out the wording for use of products in digital form, including technological equipment design. Um, to not limit the area's potential for the next thirty years, I strongly suggest we keep the words digital and technical equipment in that definition. Um, the second one is around height. The Broadway Plan had put the broad slopes height at ten stories, but not specified the one-hundred feet. My recommendation is to keep the language at ten stories to not potentially reduce the amount of industrial space one could provide. As industrial space requires a higher floor-to-floor height. Uh, further in that area, there are no view cones in the majority, and it will be next to Sinak, which has towers up to five hundred and sixty-four feet, which is fifty-nine stories. And ten stories will be dwarfed regardless. Um, my last comment was about adding six-point-oh FSR to the D P um process. But it sounds like at the beginning the council had spoken to planning and it and that is underway, and that's great to hear, and I hope we can expedite that. Uh, and I really thank, many thanks to planning and council for your continued hard work and and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, caller. Okay, uh, so I don't know if we have. So I don't know if we have any additional speakers on the line, so I will probably, I'll make a second call for speakers. If there are any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free 1-833-3538610, followed by participant code 1061445Pound before the close of the speakers' list. The phone number will be tweeted out and made available on the live stream. Any speakers in the council chamber, please come forward to the podium before the close of the speakers' list. Speakers will have five minutes to make their comments and should limit their comments to the merits of the report being considered. All right, clerk, are there any additional speakers so far?
There are no additional speakers on the phone, but I'm seeing somebody in the chamber.
In the chamber, okay. Sir, would you like to step forward and identify yourself?
Thank you. Looks like I'm the last one for today. My name is Arnold Mattis. I'm an architect. The city of Vancouver own and operating my business in Barard Slopes. I see one area for about 15 years. I'd like to speak in overall support for the proposal today with a couple of concerns. The first concern really has to do with the, what I would call regulatory momentum, which seems to be working in, contrary to the kind of overall need for growth in these areas, particularly, I would say, in the Barard Slopes area. But I would say, in 2021, council passed the Absellerah Project, the East Block building at 7 FSR, which was, I think, an excellent example of the new type of building that we want to encourage in these IC1, IC2 areas. The subsequent Broadway Plan restricted that density to 6 FSR, and then also in the Barard Slopes area, further capped that density at 4.5. We now see in the Barard Slopes area, Senac, development of over 6,000 residential units under construction in the area with arguably the lowest proposed supporting density for job space immediately adjacent to this area. So that's potentially something of significant concern. You have probably the largest residential development that will be relying on multimodal access to immediate services with the surrounding area, Barard Slopes, actually anticipating the lowest development of commercial industrial area of all of the Broadway Plan I zone areas. The second item of concern is that while we really applaud staff efforts to try to streamline and speed up the process, our concern is that with the adoption of the IC1, IC2 changes, that there may be a discouragement of projects like the Absellerah Project coming forward, because it will now appear that the easy way is to just come in under these new density caps with the restrictions firmly in place, with little room to open up and look at possibilities of going higher. So what we're recommending today is to potentially look at maybe adding some wording to this report that actually encourages, not discourages developers from coming forward, particularly in the Barard Slopes area, coming forward with projects not unlike this Absellerah Project at 7 FSR that we've seen now that's currently under construction. Secondly, what we'd like to do is encourage council and staff to look at the potential for higher density in the Barard Slopes area on a case-by-case basis. Those are all I have. Those are my comments.
Right, thank you very much. Okay, so this is the third and final call for speakers. If there are any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free 1-833-3538610, followed by participant code 1061445Pound before the close of the speakers' list. The phone number will be tweeted out and made available on the live stream. Any speakers in the council chamber, please come forward to the podium. Okay, I think we will take a five-minute recess just to see if any other speakers are going to come forward, so we'll take a short recess. Okay, very good. Thanks very much. Okay. All right, seeing that there are no additional, so clerk, are there any additional speakers?
None on the line, and I don't see anybody in the chamber.
Very good. Okay, thank you. So seeing that there are no additional speakers, the speakers' list is now closed. Seeing there are few comments received after 5:00 PM, I'm now closing the receipt of public comments. All right, does staff have any closing comments?
No closing comments from staff.
All right, thank you. All right, does council have questions for staff? And then we do. All right, so I will have councillor Kirby Young.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. I wanted to pick up on the issue that was raised by some of our speakers that we heard around the percentage of industrial, and maybe this is a question best posed to the Director of Planning, and to the comment around if, that's something that council's interested in understanding more about, the impacts of that. I wonder if you can kind of speak to what the next steps are, the opportunity for, in terms of where staff are looking on that, and for that to come to council. And then the second part of that question is, am I correct that that would be a substantive change to make that now? And so it might be best, and might change the application that is in front of us, and therefore, constitute potentially a different public hearing relative to letting this go forward, and then potentially having follow-up dialogue around, as you said, the opportunity to look at the other component with respects to the one-third and 50% industrial?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes. So wait before you deny, we're not making any changes to the plan. We're just implementing the plan that the, all the provisions that the council approved last summer. A number of speakers have talked about different aspects of the plan that they're not enamored with. I get that, right? But that's not the question before the council tonight. We would like this to move forward. We owe council an update on one year in. How's it going? Are there things that we want to change? We haven't gotten back to you with that yet, but all of these comments will be rolled into that kind of a look.
Okay, so can I just reflect that back then? So what I heard is that, one, this is enacting what council's already passed with respect to the Broadway Plan?
Yes.
And then, two, other than sort of this feedback and the one-year update, can you sort of be more explicit for me? Is this 50% piece an issue that staff are specifically looking at evaluating?
Yes, yes. And we know there's always been questions about tower heights, floor plates, the 50%. There's a number of those issues that we're keeping track of, but the vast majority of our applications are compliant, and they're ready to get going. We've got, I think, at least 10 applications that are on hold, waiting for these amendments to be approved. So that's why we'd like to accelerate these.
Okay, and in that one-year update, that would be contained in that, and when would that come to council? Just looking for clarification on that.
Well, unfortunately, Matt couldn't be here tonight. He was at Jericho, but we're thinking the fall or early next year. We've had, as you know, a lot more work on Broadway Plan than with all the LOEs and the inquiries that have come in, but we will make it a priority, and I'll get you a memo back on the timing of that. How's that sound?
Thanks, Teresa.
Okay.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Meisner.
Hey, great, thanks. That did answer some of my questions. Just because I wasn't here for the Broadway Plan originally, I have a couple of questions. So we heard the example of Absellerah at 7 FSR. So why would we go down to 6.5 in that, in Mount Pleasant, if Absellerah is 7?
Remember, tonight's not changing anything.
I just want to understand it better.
Thank you for the question, Chris Maugh with the Broadway Plan team. So the 6 FSR option is really, it was modeled off of that Absellerah proposal, so we really see that as akin to kind of the Absellerah. There were some slightly different kind of considerations, given that the Absellerah Project came forward through the, before the plan was approved, but the 6 FSR is kind of meant to be that half-industrial, half other employment uses, similar to the scale of the Absellerah Project.
But you wouldn't be able to build that particular building now?
Not at exactly 7 FSR, no, but at a comparable scale and comparable height, yes.
Okay. And then, can you just, again, I just want to understand the rationale around some of this? The Barard Slopes at 4.5, we heard, you know, that's lower density, although it's adjacent to Senac, and there's going to be, you know, 10,000 residents there, for example. What's the rationale behind that?
Yeah, so thanks for the question. The four and a half FSR is an increase for that Barard Slopes area. When we did the planning process, we obviously went through a bunch of engagement and economic testing, and that's where we landed for the Barard Slopes. That said, as Teresa mentioned, we will be monitoring the plan and be reporting back on the plan and its outcomes, and we're absolutely open to considering changes to the plan as necessary. But as Teresa was mentioning today, we're just kind of implementing what the land use plan is.
Yeah, and on that half option, you said that you'd be open to pre-zoning that potentially. So what was the timing on getting back to council? Was that the fall as well?
We don't have precise timing. I think we, there's a little bit more urban design work that we need to figure out with the zoning, but as I kind of mentioned, the engineering and the infrastructure is probably one of the key pieces that we have to take a look at with that more intensive development, too.
We can put that in, we can put that in the memo, yeah. Engineering is a little, is what's requiring a little more testing, but we'll get with them and put that information in a memo to you.
Okay, that would be great. And then just one more question. We heard about the, I think it was the elevator shaft, like being in the center of the building versus on the side of the building, if I'm understanding that correctly?
Yeah, I might pass that to Kevin Spanz in Development and Planning.
Hi. Hi. Kevin Spanz, Assistant Director of Development Planning and Urban Design. Thank you for the question. You know, unfortunately, it's really a question best answered by specific applicants who are looking at that particular form of development. My own experience as an architect and working with the staff on Team who are urban designers and architects, you know, we're not designing anything that would prohibit that. I can understand the utility for it for more functionality, more open space, not having a centralized core, but there would be nothing that would necessarily prohibit that from being an option. You know, there may be some nuances in there that we would have to work on with particular applicants. We'd be more than happy to do that, but yeah.
So there's nothing prohibiting that in this implementation of these amendments?
Nothing written into the changes to the zoning. You know, I can't speak to maybe perhaps nuanced guidelines or something that, but those are intended to be negotiable things, sort of like a benchmark to work from.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's great, thanks.
Thanks very much, councillor Meisner. Councillor Carr?
Yeah, thanks. I think I have some similar questions about the points that were raised, and I really appreciate you affirming that this is implementing what we decided, so we need to get on with that, but that you will have a report back. One of the points that was raised by, I think it was Kristi Mattis, one of the speakers, was around the striking out in S2 of digital products and technical equipment, and I'm just wondering if you could remind me why we did that, and if we are going to monitor that and see if that's a problem for the industrial users that want to pursue those things.
Good evening, Chair and councillor.
Good evening, Chair and council. Sean Martinez with the Economic Development Planning team in PDS. So we looked at, during the Broadway Plan, we spoke to and analyzed the group of the CPM users as well as extensive discussions with DBL. The original CPM definition was causing a lot of issues with regards to, because of overlap with other definitions within Section 2, and that was causing delays and essentially a lot more processing time to get those types of uses through. So we decided to go through and clarify the type of definition that is part of CPM. So creative products manufacturing has been clarified to be the design, the digital, wherein digital design is also allowed, of physical products. This is to make it clearly part of the manufacturing process. It is a lighter use, and which is why it's being limited to the upper level of an industrial space. Digital design is allowed. The physical products do not have to be manufactured in the space. To that end, the digital design of digital products are still allowed in these areas as well. They just have to occupy spaces in the office portion. In Mount Pleasant, that would actually occupy about two-thirds of the building, as 33% is the minimum for the industrial.
That's good clarity. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm appreciative of the fact that I think I propose of your comments back to councillor Meisner that we'll be getting more information back on some of these particular points that were raised, and this is a whole evolving landscape, in fact, with AI really evolving. So I appreciate the work here.
Councillor Carr, councillor Moni, you?
Yeah, thanks, Chair. I too am trying to understand this business a little better. Just going off councillor Meisner's questions, one of the things we heard was a limiting of floor plate size to 10,000 square feet, if I heard correctly. I'm just wondering, what was it? Has that changed recently? Do we have plans on increasing that? And I think that was what was related to the ability to move elevator locations within the building itself from center to side?
That may be something that impacted it, or, sorry. First of all, Kevin Spanz, Assistant Director of Development Planning and Urban Design. Thank you for the question. So the question of tower floor plate sizes was approved with the Broadway Plan. That isn't a question here. The rationale really was not to limit any kind of floor plate of the industrial spaces, which would be on the lower part of a building, but rather anything over 60 feet, which would be that additional tower floor plate. That said, this is not a, like, that's a benchmark that we work from in order to be consistent and replicable and predictable with industry. But it's something that we are more than happy to work through with applicants on to find the right form that otherwise achieves other objectives that we may have with urban design criteria or something else, shadowing things like that. So it's a benchmark to work from.
What's negotiable?
Yeah, no, no, we do like to, we've got sort of a cap to that, but it's a pretty substantial increase over that within sort of our precedents that we're kind of working with applicants on. So, but yeah, it's something to work from, just so that we're working from something that's kind of predictable and has been tested.
All right, I think that makes sense to me. That's my only question, Chair. Thanks.
Great.
Thank you much, councillor. Okay, so council will now make its decision. Oh, first of all, Clerk, have we received any additional comments since the close of public comments?
Thank you, Chair. Council has all of the comments that were received, and they've also been published.
Okay, thank you very much. All right. Council will now make its decision on this application. Do we have a mover? Councillor Carr, second, or councillor Kirby Young. Is there any debate? Hey, I see none. For me? Okay, one moment, I'll just advance you up there.
Sorry, my mouse clicking. There's a bit of a delay today for some reason. I just wanted to say that it was valuable to hear the concerns raised today by several of the speakers, because we want to make sure we get this right, but also understand the need to move this forward, given the applications that are in the queue and waiting for this to be passed. So I think that's the best course of action today, and then we will get that additional information back and be able to maybe make some further changes if needed in the near future. So I'm happy to support this in that spirit.
Excellent. Thank you very much, councillor. Okay. All right, so just a reminder to any council member participating virtually whose video is disabled to be marked, will be marked absent for the vote pursuant to Section 1413 of the procedure by law. I am now going to call the vote. Clerk, can you take us to the voting screen? Also, please register your votes. Yeah, please. And there we have it. Okay, so thank you very much, council. All right. We have a unanimous vote with councillors Bly and Mayor Sim absent. May I have a motion to adjourn? Councillor Moni, second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All right, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, staff.